Good evening. Today is February 10, 2022, and the time is 6:30 PM. I will now call the regular meeting of ISD 191 Board of Education to order. Before we begin, I would like to first welcome everybody here in the audience today and those watching online. I would like to start our meeting first with this. We are gathered here on the unceded land of the Dakota and Ojibwe peoples. I ask you to join me in acknowledging those indigenous communities, their elders, both past and present, and the future generations. This institution also acknowledges that it was founded upon exclusions and erasures of many indigenous peoples, including those on whose land this institution is located. This act of acknowledgement demonstrates a commitment to beginning a process of working to dismantle the ongoing legacies of settler colonization. So as we start, I'd also like to invite Zoe to lead us in our pledge.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Director Werb.
Second.
Second by Director Said. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries unanimously. Next, we'll move on to our informational portion of our meeting. First, we will start with a report about American Indian education programming. And we have Speakers Rebecca Musso, Indigenous Cultural Liaison, and Kelly Sunquist, American Indian Parent Advisory Chair. Welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you, Chair Chester. My name is Rebecca Musso. As it was stated, I am the Indigenous Cultural Liaison for District 191. This is our parent advisory chairperson, Kelly Sunquist. She has two children at William Burn. I have six children in the district, Hidden Valley, Eagle Ridge, and the high school. Thank you for reading our land acknowledgement. The purpose and goals of the American Indian Education Program is academic achievement of indigenous students, of course, post-secondary prep for those indigenous students, ensuring the relevant curriculum, especially those that are state mandated for social studies and science. Part of the work that I'm doing directly with the students is positive reinforcement of their self-image, working on identity, learning and understanding their indigenous background, what that means, how that shapes their experiences in the community and life. Intercultural awareness, so just here sharing this, what we're doing in the program is bringing that called intercultural awareness. And in the next slides, many of the events and functions and work that we're doing within the program. The Burnsville 191 has 143 native students. The role of the parent advisory committee is, of course, critical to the achievement of our native students. And it's composed of the parents of the children that are eligible to participate in the program, and some staff and some students. We are building a native student leadership group, so they play a big role in what happens with the program as well. And the parent committee advises me in my role and my job, just similar to what you guys do. And it's been really great working with Kelly. She's been a very big help coming in middle of the pandemic and everything, so it's been awesome. And this is just a short list of the many events and functions that have happened since the last time I presented, a year ago. And in the next slides, I'll highlight some of the things that have happened and are happening. Last May, when it was okay for us to come together in person, we held a family night and partnered with Lakeville. And we brought in a drumming and singing teacher. And he was amazing with the kids and taught them some songs and did some singing and dancing. And the program had a giveaway and like a feed and fed the community of the 191 community and also Lakeville's native community. And then we had our graduate honoring in June, just before commencement. And we had 13 native seniors, as pictured here. Again, we partnered with Lakeville. And so a few of their seniors were in attendance as well. And part of that graduation and part of this is educational. And learning and understanding identity is understanding protocols and honoring our relatives. And so when there's a big lifetime milestone or achievement, like graduation, we give gifts. And it's traditionally a blanket. And then underneath the blanket, there's a stole, like you would wear at commencement, but it's like a panel tan or it's beaded sometimes. And the boys and girls or students are given feathers, eagle feathers. And there's some protocols surrounding that for legality, is that you have to sign a 506 form and all of that. So not everyone gets a feather. And yeah, the other important piece that I wanted to recognize here is that the two adults that are pictured here, their son tragically passed away. And he would have graduated last June, and so we honored him and his family, Sam Keizer. This November, this past November, for Native American Heritage Month, we held two events. We had Jackie Byrd at the Maraz Center, and her performance is on the district YouTube channel. And we also had Joelle Bear's Tale, and she wrote the book Bear's Braids. And Bear's Braids typically are, not typically, but generally is kind of an anti-bullying type of message in the book, and also raising awareness for indigenous men and women and why indigenous peoples wear their hair long and wear them in braids, and protocols surrounding that. And so that's the bigger, one of the bigger messages coming out of this book. And here are some pictures from Jackie Byrd's presentation. And like I said, the whole presentation is on the district's YouTube channel. And Joelle's book reading and signing. This is the South of the River Committee. So these are just a few of us from the neighboring districts. And those are all the districts that are listed. The South of the River Committee collaborates for drum and dance classes and powwow planning. We just had our latest drum and dance class here in the Burnsville Eagan Savage Room just yesterday. And here's some pictures, here's drumming and dancing. In the top picture, they're kind of doing like a musical chairs and so make it fun for the kids and helps them learn steps and teaches them in a fun way powwow dancing. Our next one is February 23, and we will be at 196th District at the end of the month, just because we're closed for parent teaching conferences coming up. And the big event in May is the powwow that Burnsville has been the host venue for, for a lot of years. That day, May 21st, so put it on your calendars. We're super excited. We just had a powwow meeting today, so there's a lot of good things happening. The lacrosse event is confirmed. There'll be more graduate honorings, Jackie Byrd is coming back, and a feast. And there'll be vendors and other food vendors and food trucks and things like that. So lots of exciting things happening for that day. I mentioned the Native Student Leadership Group, and these are some of the things that we will be working on moving forward as the group grows and gets more solidified. And this is at the high school right now, the high school and the alternative school. Future plans. So we want to plan more family nights. We've had interest in sewing and beading, more book readings, storytelling, donations. So each, this year and last December, we did a big Toys for Tots drive. And we have some things left over. And so those things that are left over, we'll be donating to the schools that need like things for bingo nights or other prizes for teachers and classrooms and things like that. And also to the Blaze Nation store at the high school. And then whatever's left from there will go to a local shelter. And then, like I mentioned, the powwow graduate honoring. Moving forward, thinking into next school year, other indigenous presenters, if there's anyone in particular that you guys or the community would like to see come and share their knowledge. I'm more than happy to vet those people and seek them out and make those connections. We're gonna do, I would like to do a big Rock Your Moccasins Day. It's a global day, November 15. We want to get the students and the families as part of our sewing and beading nights to learn how to make moccasins, excuse me, and wear them, have them ready to wear for November 15. And then also getting the land acknowledgements posted. So printing like posters and having those posters framed and displayed in each of the buildings. We already did that this past March, last March, so a year ago now, at the high school. But it's just on a TV and it's not always displayed. And so this way, it'll be displayed and noticed and recognizable in each building. Is there any questions?
Thank you. Yes, is there any questions, discussion?
I just want to say, I haven't been to the powwow, but I'm very excited. I want to go this year. So you do the drum and dancing at the powwow. Who comes in and does that? Is it, because I'm familiar with the Minnewachtin Sioux community, is it?
So it's really open to any native indigenous person that's a powwow person, but really open to the communities here to bring that awareness. And it is part of that intercultural experience and learning and understanding. So yes, please come. But there is drumming and dancing. And so part of the South of the River Committee is we make the posters. And so that's already been posted out into social medias, and so that brings the people in. And then we're also in the process of just doing invited drums. And so we'll have about four drums that we're reaching out to within the committee. And yeah, and also they'll be there and we'll have them all set up and everything will be arranged and all of that. So yeah. Part of the drum and dance class nights, too, is we're hoping to have the dancers, the students that have come and participate to display and showcase the things that they've learned. And also the boys that have been learning, hopefully they can share a song or two during the powwow to showcase their knowledge and their achievements and all that they've learned this past year. So yeah.
Great. I'm very excited. I think you know what's wonderful about, you know, drum and dance, especially the Native American drum and dance. I mean, we all are connected by music and dance. And I think exposing especially children to that just really, I think, brings a deeper understanding of how we're all connected. So really, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that.
Thanks for being here. Do you think there would be any cultural food that you would sell as a fundraiser, too?
Yep. Yep. Well, I don't know about a fundraiser right now. We're not, we don't really need to do any fundraising this year. Moving into next year, we most definitely will be doing fundraising. But at the powwow, there will be, we actually, well, actually, at the graduation, we had this past June, we hired Trickster Tacos. And then not every drum and dance, but for a couple of them, we've, so we've been utilizing indigenous-owned food vendors. And they make their traditional whatever, because they're not all the same tribe. And so they'll make their traditional dishes and however they make it. And we'll sell it or provide it. And so they'll be at the powwow, too.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Chester. Yes, thank you both for being here. Always appreciate hearing from the parent group. Just a couple of questions. First, I just so happened to be reading an article this weekend about how the Malax Ojibwe have formed some sort of agreement with Rosetta Stone to help, you know, document and retain the Ojibwe language. I wonder if your group has, if the group has discussed that at all, if there's, you know, what, it just, if there's any kind of application.
I'm just going to bring that up at the next parent meeting. It actually doesn't get released to the public until March of this year. Right now, it is just exclusively for the Malax Band of Ojibwa, from what I've received.
And eventually, it looked like it was going to roll out, but over time, yeah, for sure. And then Rebecca, you had mentioned looking for suggestions for people to participate. I know you've mentioned, you know, the native food vendors. And the sous chef has been quite successful. It would be wonderful to be able to get him to come in some capacity.
Okay.
I just, from a business perspective, from a native perspective, just a really successful person. And there was one other question. Oh. So Chair Chester, I'm on the policy committee, and I'm wondering if the board might want to consider, or the committee might want to consider reviewing Policy 203, Order of the Regular School Board Meeting, so that we might consider if we want to start with, start our board meetings with the land acknowledgement in keeping with what we did tonight.
Yeah, I would think that'd be good.
It's a good conversation.
Yeah.
What was the policy number?
203. Thank you.
Any other comments, discussion? I thank you so much for this presentation. I am related with the land acknowledgement in all our buildings. It's something where I currently work, we have. And so I think it's wonderful to be able to have that in each of our buildings here, in 191. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Thank you for your time.
Next on our agenda, we have a report about FY23 preliminary budget. We have Dr. Teresa Battle Superintendent, Lisa Ryder, Executive Director of Business Services, Amina Abdal, Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, and Stacy Silvine, Executive Director of Human Resources.
Thank you, Chair Chester and members of the board. Tonight's staff and I will present information on the development of our fiscal year 23 budget. First, let me begin with the approach. Our budget development approach is a priority-based one. So what are some of the priorities? First, our investments in the pathways pre-K-12, our achievement and integration plan, and our equity work. This affirms our priority to continue down the path we've created when it comes to instruction, programming, and services to our students. As you know, you have been fully supportive of our pathways model and that it reaches all the way from pre-K to graduation. We also have a priority to invest in early learning and the voluntary pre-K at each elementary. We want to help to focus on the personalized needs of our students. And we want to continue to pursue equity and work toward becoming a culturally proficient school system. And we have heard from our public about some priorities for mental health and overall wellness in previous surveys that we sent related to the federal funding. We also want to acknowledge that we have begun the work for the strategic roadmap. We have kept our district's mission of each student future-ready and community-strong, and we have declared our new district values. And you will soon receive the strategic directions to complete the strategic roadmap with a dashboard. Also, staff and I reviewed the declared board values that you established for negotiations with employee groups. Tonight, unfortunately, we will show a deficit between expected or projected revenues and expenditures for fiscal year 23. I want to emphasize that we are very thankful for the per pupil allocation from Governor Walz and the Minnesota Legislature. Yet, we still have some challenging, challenges getting the funding we need to serve each student. We will also tonight share some strategies to bring you a structurally balanced budget. And so with that, I will turn it over to Executive Director of Finance, Lisa Ryder.
So a few of these, the overviews here. We've got a number of, there are three items on this page here regarding the FY23 budget approach, our processes and our strategies, much of which has been described by Superintendent Dr. Battle. We will review our current reality after the audit has already been incorporated into these assumptions, as well as the revised FY22, which you approved at the last meeting. Our next steps for the board action will also be shared. So our agenda is as listed here. And as we get into our preliminary adopted budget, we have links here to the guiding change and to the budget goals, process, and timeline. This is not new information. It is tweaked a little bit on the budget goals, process, and timeline just to reflect some of the adjustments we've made to our timeline and whether things are presented within the board meeting or in a workshop environment. But otherwise, it has not changed substantially. As we take a look, excuse me, at the Board of Education guiding values, these are the values Superintendent Dr. Battle referred to earlier that were used during our process of negotiating. Our next slide. Is the preliminary budget revenue assumptions. Here is where the list of, the bullet items that are listed here. And I see there's one kind of melding at the bottom there, which is different from what is printed. But we will cover these. The enrollment assumed for FY23 will be 7,021 for fall and end of year. And that is K-12, so that does not include our early learners. Our base model will assume a 2% increase in the general education formula, which was approved by the 2021 legislative session. Our elementary and secondary school emergency relief fund, known as our SR3 funds, will be included. And our SR2 funds are removed from our projections, anticipating that they will be fully spent this fiscal year. We have seen a reduction in enrollment and also in compensatory calculation of revenue. Those impact us in two different areas and significantly. So we have made adjustments to address those numbers. And lastly, we have a continued assumption of a cross-subsidy that we do experience in the areas of special education and English learner. So there is an assumption, excuse me, that we will have around $13 million of cross-subsidy in those two areas combined. Our preliminary budget expenditure assumptions are the salary and benefit assumptions for all contracts have been applied through a average broad-stroke approach. So it is just across the board on all line items that are salary-related. In doing so, that's how we make assumptions at this point in time. We know that when we do our line item budget, we will then be rolling people forward for their individual contract amounts that they would be expected to be receiving next year. But at this point in time, that is not yet done. That's a part of the process when we get to May. So the transportation increase is assumed, as this is still in process. And we have a 3% increase on utilities. Our long-term facility maintenance projects, I want to make mention of the fact that our revenues equal our expenditures in this case. And this is something that you approve in advance through the levy process with a 10-year plan. And so each year, then, the amount that you have listed on that 10-year plan is what is then placed into the levy, taxpayers in our community are levied that dollar amount as part of the property taxes. So therefore, this is an area where the dollar amounts that we have identified for spending are going to tie exactly to the revenue amount, similar to a federal grant. We have a 0% assumption on supplies and materials. We have a 0% assumption on supplies and materials. And our SR3 funds, as I mentioned, will replace our SR2 funds when it comes to the additional positions that have been considered and recommended to be continuing. There are, as I mentioned earlier, adjustments for reduction in the compensatory revenue. And therefore, there are expenditures. So now let's talk about strategies to structurally balance this budget. We will be prioritizing the investment for, as Dr. Battle mentioned, the instructional priorities that include our pre-K-12 pathways. We have right sizing we do each year, and you'll hear more about that in a moment. The use of restricted funds before general undesignated funds, which is in our, our fund balance policy as well. So that's a strategy we utilize. Identifying efficiencies in utilizing our resources is something that um every department and every um principal in our admin team has been involved in reviewing and assessing what it, that might look like for each of them. And uh, the, the potential of strategically utilizing our federal resources as we did this fiscal year may also be a strategy to utilize, um, to equitably address the, the impact that we have had of the pandemic. At this point, I will turn this over then to Amina Oftedal.
Thank you, Chair Chester, members of the board, Superintendent Battle. Um, I'm really pleased to be able to kind of share this uh view of our instructional priorities, really looking at where all of our external and internal strategic planning needs to be, uh, needs to be focused on. You know, starting with our focus on equity and cultural proficiency, ensuring that we are creating that, that culturally proficient school system, not just a culturally proficient classroom, but school system. Uh, and that, connecting that to the external piece from the Department of Education, which is the world's best workforce, looking at those five goals, um, really, uh, you know, comes back to some of the things that even Director Ryder has pointed out, which are our early learners, really looking at um making sure that all of our students from early learners to graduates are prepared. And so that, that really is an all-encompassing guide for us. Um, strategically, the board has also chosen to pursue K-12 pathways and continuing to support those, knowing that our K-12 pathways, again, connect directly to our um equity and cultural proficiency goals. The, the goal of the, the pathway schools is to develop those instructional structures that allow for that equal access of opportunity for advanced learning, for STEM, and for the arts. And really looking at that personalized learning that Dr. Battle shared with us earlier. Uh, and also as an external piece is our achievement integration, which again connects to our pathways and connects into the world's best workforce and our cultural proficiency. The goal there is to reduce economic and socioeconomic and racial disparities and ensure that we are creating systems that, again, allows for that equa, equity in access and services. With these priorities in mind, we take a look at what funding sources um are available through the, um, through the CISA department. And uh, as Director Ryder mentioned, we really look first at our restricted funds and spending those restricted funds um directly on the priorities that are instructional priorities, such as serving our English learners, creating the access that they would have to the general ed curriculum, um, ensuring that uh we are training our classrooms and providing opportunities for things like AVID, uh, so students are prepared for post-secondary. Um, also, the achievement integration program also supports our cultural liaisons, which again helps provide access and supports us as, uh, on our journey for cultural proficiency. Uh, we do spend our curriculum capital. This is the uh capital funds used to buy the textbooks and the core curriculum that uh students experience K through 12. And then some of the pieces are also supported through general funds. So we start with our federal funding, then we go to our state funding. We then go to capital funding, and then other things that still need to be supported are done so through these four uh budget units within the general fund. And so using those, uh, we continue to support these instructional priorities and then use these priorities to guide us in uh spending expenditures and planning for other areas.
Next, we'll have Director Silvine.
So each year, as a part of our budget process and staffing process, we do what we call right sizing. There are a number of different ways in which the term right sizing can be applied. But as far as an annual basis, what we're looking at is matching the board-approved class sizes with our current enrollment. So if we need to, we reduce FTEs, primarily instructional FTEs. We don't need as many classes taught if our number of students are reducing to maintain the same type of class sizes. The other annual right sizing that we do is to stay within our budget for our categorical areas, such as Title I, Achievement and Integration, and Compensatory. Um, each of those different areas provides a certain amount of funding. That funding then is used for, again, categorical areas. Title I at our elementary, compensatory offsets 41, 42 FTEs for EL services, uh, English language. So we're, we're, you know, it gets used up quickly in those areas. So those are our annual right sizing. Other examples of right sizing is what we did just a couple of years ago. Once our enrollment reaches a certain level to where our buildings are no longer efficient, then you start looking at the reduction of your school sites. That would also be considered a right sizing move. So right now, we're doing it at the micro level, but at some point, you may have to look again at the macro level. So allocations then are provided to our building principals based upon our current board-approved class sizes. So when we're looking at kindergarten through fifth grade, our average um class size across all six grades is 24.5. Again, our kindergarten will have smaller class sizes as the target, and by the time you reach fifth grade, it will be a little bit larger. When you start looking at secondary, it's a little bit different. In elementary, you have your students with one teacher throughout pretty much the entire day. So that's why you need a class of 22 students. You know, then they maybe, they go to Fayette. So, and then they're back with the teacher. There's not movement of the students between different teachers for different types of courses, different needs. Special ed, um, and our EL services usually either come in with a push-in model or pull students out based upon their needs. But it doesn't really impact class sizes across the board like it does at secondary. Okay? So when we look at secondary averages for grade six or eight, we're looking at 21 students per FTE. And the reason that we label it that way is because I have so many teachers that teach special ed, so many that teach EL, school with tennis school. I feel like I'm missing something, but your specialist, as well as all your different content areas. So you take all of those students and you're spreading them out each class period to all of those different teachers. Okay? And the only time in which a teacher isn't teaching is during a prep or possibly a supervision period. Now, anyone knows, when you walk into the building, you're not gonna see 21 students in every class. That's because some of our specialist areas, like special ed, may only be serving anywhere between eight to 12 students at a time. Okay? So when you have smaller class sizes for some of your teachers, your other end, you're gonna have to make up for that somewhere else in the building, and your average increases. That's what keeps it at the 21. But there's enough teachers in the building. If we sent them all equally, it'd be about 21 students per FTE. Same thing is happening at the high school for 912. There, we're looking at about 26 students per FTE. Okay? Again, compensatory, your um EL services, special ed, and then your, your general allocation across the board. Again, special ed courses, your EL courses may have fewer students, college and schools have fewer students. That's kind of an external force that keeps the class sizes down. As well as you may have team teaching occurring with special ed teachers and general ed teachers working together in the classroom. Now you have two teachers assigned to a class of 35, 36 students. So, you know, it's actually kind of one to eighteen. So every time you have those smaller ratios, you're going to have other classes somewhere in the building that are significantly larger. So that's why you have discrepancy. So when you start trying to increase your class sizes, understand it isn't, especially at secondary, it isn't evenly distributed. Somewhere, that has to make up based upon your needs and your programming choices.
Chair Chester and Directors of the Board, I have the next two slides. Um, this next slide addresses the equitable use of federal resources. And so when we receive the federal funds, we did uh review the acceptable uses. And so based on that, we decided that our purpose would be for relief, recovery, and rebound. Now, most of us know, we thought we would have a earlier rebound from COVID, but uh because of Delta and Omicron, Omicron, we are still in the midst of this pandemic. We also identified, uh, based on stakeholder feedback, including uh parents, surveys, students, and staff, the health needs, physical, mental, social, emotional, the connection to school, physical, digital, uh, social, emotional, and effective learning opportunities. To tell you a little bit about um the steps that we're going to use to identify the uses of SR3 funds. Finance has provided, and you may be familiar with the federal fund summary. We have a list that uh last year we increased by, I think, five more funding sources. So uh Finance has kept track of all of those funding sources. We are currently identifying commitments we have from staffing for this year. For example, you may remember that we use federal funds to add additional teachers at K1 and 2. Primarily because for our second graders, the last in-person experience they had was when they were kindergartners. And so we really want to ameliorate the impact of COVID. We believe since we're still continuing and their uh, 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 learning has been interrupted, that may be a continuation with the use of federal funds. So that's one example. We also looking again at a needs assessment based on student data, stakeholder feedback, um, to uh decide on the priorities for the SR3 and the other ones that will continue through next year. Uh, the next slide, please. So the next strategy is use of restricted funds before general undesignated funds and to identify efficiency in utilizing resources. So as Executive Director Lisa Ryder said, we have a more inclusive process this year. We have included not only members of the executive leadership team, but directors and principals to actually look at every budget and go through what we call line item review uh to find efficiencies. Um, so we are making sure that we are coding all expenditures to the correct um budget because that will help us if we need to move funds to other sources based on um acceptable uses. Um, we are going to identify any efficiencies that may result in cost savings. We will make decisions about discretionary funding, those that aren't targeted for specific uses. Um, there may be some budget adjustments for or requests for additional funding. So we actually have created a new process in form um that includes, uh, they must give a rationale, how the funds will be used, sustainability, and a few other components. So we actually have a cross-functional team reviewing every budget before uh the budget managers make a recommendation to me.
Thank you, Superintendent Dr. Battle. This is the current reality screen that you are looking at now, and it begins with a lot of numbers. Um, on the left-hand side is the description of what we're looking at for each row. The first column is reflective of the final audited results from the last fiscal year of 2020, 2021. And then you can see a column with a, a gray header that is for June of 2021, when we adopted the budget for FY22. The next column over is the revised budget that was just recently approved by the board. And then the last three columns of numbers are all projected numbers for fiscal year 23, fiscal year 24, and fiscal year 25. This model always looks a little scary when you look two or three years out. Um, and I'll explain why in a moment here. So we're gonna focus on the projected FY23 column. And what we have here is the beginning fund balance is now going to reflect what we are projecting after the approved revised budget. And the total revenues you see are broken down into two lines, the first of which is the revenues that are non-federal relief funds. So this will still include our federal funds that are typical for us, like Title I, Title II, III, IV, right? But it will not include the federal relief funds that we are keeping out separately. Next, you will see two lines reflecting the expenditures, similar approach in that fashion as well. What you will notice if you compare our projected for 23 to the revised for 22, you will see that in 22, we're making the assumption that we have nine point, almost five million, nine point five million in revenues, but only 5.2 million showing in the expenditures. And why is that different? In the current fiscal year, we are making the assumption that we are using some of those federal funds to address the shortfall in the budget and as a strategy. In the column for FY23, at this moment, that is not the assumption. The assumption is that that is wholly separate and stands alone. When you compare your total revenues and your total expenditures, there is a difference between the two of $10,066,385. The numbers that you see below, the, this would project an ending fund balance of 19.3 mil. And that number then is broken down below into fund balance categories. I will admit that the, the line item that says committed, I believe, is too low, the way it's stated right now. And that's um probably a correction we'll wanna make as we move this forward. But the non-spendable, I'm keeping basically around the same numbers that we've seen in the past few years. The restricted is making the assumption that um a good portion of that restricted might get spent down. And that's something we have to look a little closer at too, because this gets down into exactly the account codes and calculating that restricted revenue. Committed is the dollars that are typically um authorized by the board to be committed from one year to the next, and they have included in the past carryovers, pro-pay, and our um facilities rental, fund balances. The assigned, we utilized that this past year when we audit, the final audit, set aside $5.5 million for us to use to help with um offsetting and balancing the budget for the current year. But as we revise the budget, we um, we are not necessarily utilizing those dollars any longer moving forward as we project forward. Does that make sense? The assumption at this time, not to say that the board couldn't make that presumption. Again, uh, the total ending fund balance, then, or I'm sorry, the unassigned is the difference then, and you have a, a total that needs to match the above row as well of 19.3 million. When you calculate the unassigned fund balance percentage, taking the $13.9 million that you have in unassigned, and you divide that then by the expenditures, you come up with a 9.7% currently. Fund balance policy calls for an 8% um as, you know, if not waived. Couple other things I'd like to point out. Um, as we take a look then at the 2024 year, what I have done for the presumptions on the revenues is it is making the similar assumption of the revenue that you have in 23, but we have calculated an adjustment by taking the enrollment projection and applying to it the assumed 0% increase on gen ed formula for the following year and um calculating what that dollar amount is and then reducing it. Does that make sense? A similar um approach has been made for the fiscal year 25 revenue as well, from 24 to 25. 25. You see similar federal revenue relief funds identified in fiscal year 24 as you have in fiscal year 23. Those are the S R three funds, basically half and half. Okay? And similar on the, on the expenditures for federal relief as well. On the line for expenditures, we have 130, almost 135 million in projected FY23. But as we move to FY24, I have applied a 5% increase. That's the assumption at this moment. The similar number to the right for FY25 has a 4% applied to that expenditure. Let's see. As I mentioned, you know, we have some work and some tweaking maybe to do on that committed fund balance as you look at that across the years on the bottom. But I also want to draw attention to the fact that with nothing done for the current year and with these assumptions as I've laid out for you, this does project forward that we would be into the negative unassigned fund balances for the next two fiscal years. This is a little bit unrealistic because we probably won't let us go forward with nothing being done. But this is our starting point, and this is the preliminary current reality we have for fiscal year 23 to 25. In our workshop this evening, we will have the interactive model available for you to make assumptions that may be different from what I've described and see that impact. And then we wanted to show you the adopted budget timeline. This is our last slide. So this lays out for people as to what it is that we're doing here in February. There will be, the survey is open, virtual meetings will take place, and presentations will be seeking input and feedback about our priorities. On February 24th, there will be another report of our preliminary list of budget adjustments. We'll gather feedback again after that meeting and continue conversations into March in workshop environment as well as at board meetings. With our presenting, our Superintendent will present the final recommended budget adjustments by department in the board meeting on March 24th. At that point then, we'll go to work on the line item information that needs to be developed so that you then have a final adopted budget presented to you. The first meeting in June on the 9th, and approval would be asked for on the 16th of June. Every fiscal year, a budget must be approved by June 30th. And with that, that concludes our presentation.
Thank you. Knowing that we'll be also going and discussing this further into a workshop, I'll just open it up for any questions or discussion.
I just have one. So for our community who may be watching from home, could you remind me, so you said that projected enrollment for next year is 7,219 students?
Correct.
Could you just remind me what the, what the number was for this current school year?
Yes, I can do that. I have it. It was the equivalent number, K-12, for last, the current school year is 7,448.
So we're looking at about 230 fewer.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yep.
So I just want to clarify, the S R funds that we're getting, those are ending as of 23, 24.
We have the opportunity for our S R two funds to carry forward should they not be spent, but we're anticipating that they will be fully spent.
Okay.
There's a few other of the lists of federal funds that we have as well that may have the ability to carry forward, should they not be fully utilized in FY22. However, at this point in time, as we develop the adopted budget, we're focusing only on half of the S R three dollars being placed into the budget. And as we revise the budget next year, we would then be addressing any carryforwards that there might be once the audit's complete.
So we're going on the assumption right now that only half?
So you have, we have approximately $12 million. I don't have the exact number in my head at the moment. I have it on the computer, though. And that's for S R three, 80% allocation. And then there's another about 3.2 million of the 20% allocation to us. Those funds for S R three are planned and available to us through, I believe it's September of '25. So we're looking to utilize it in fiscal year 23 and fiscal year 24, which ends June 30th. And that necess, I said that wrong. Twenty, it's fiscal year 23, fiscal year 24, and the funds are supposed to end September of '24. There we go. And, and we're not going to count on the fact that July, August, and September of that last, you know, those last three months that we're going to utilize the funds there necessarily unless there's a matter of something not necessarily coming through in the shipping and, and it carries forward.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions, discussion? I think the only one that I had is when you mentioned enrollment being K-12, not including pre-K. Did that also not include like best or some of our students that are in fifth, sixth, or seventh year?
K through 12th grade, including our best, are included in the 2000, or 7,219.
Okay. Okay, I think, oh, that's all my questions. Thank you very much, and we look forward to our workshop. Next on our agenda, we'll receive an update about District 191's efforts to implement COVID-related educational and public health guidance issued by the M D E and M D H respectively. We have Dr. Teresa Battle.
Thank you Chair Chester, Directors of the Board, and our student representative. If I did not have a mask, you would see a very slight smile on my face. This week and last offered a glimmer of hope that the Omicron surge has peaked and is in a downward trend. Dakota County reports that they are beyond the pink, and I am cautiously optimistic, but hospitalizations and death rates are still very concerning. As the pandemic may move to an endemic, we have begun conversations with public health officials and our District COVID-19 Advisory Team about a possible transition. Dakota County advises us to not remove safety measures too soon, though. Topics under consideration for review are the mask mandate, visitor procedures, and other procedures related to our response to COVID and mitigation strategies. Another sign that we are in a downward trend can be seen in the impact of the surge on our substitute fill rates. As of Friday, February 7th, sub-fill rates for the week of 131 were at 76%, with 98% of teachers in place and 95% of educational assistance in place. This is an increase from a range of 45 to 50% sub-fill rate the weeks immediately after winter break. I cannot thank staff enough for all they did, this board's direction to get 191, as we continue to respond to the pandemic. We actually have a new sub starting Friday, that started Friday at Edward Neal. All buildings are back to being staffed with at least one building sub, and Hidden Valley, Nicollet, and Burnsville High School are all staffed with two. Building subs accounted for one-third of overall coverage this week. We are still working on finding a second sub for other buildings. So Public, if you're interested in connecting with wonderful students, joining colleagues that really know what it means to be compassionate and collaborative, please contact us if you'd like to be a sub. Now, joining me will be Bernie Bean for Health Data and Information and Brian Gersich for an update about activities and athletics.
Thank you, Dr. Battle. Good evening, Director Chester and Board of Directors. Our state and community continues to be in a high transmission level for COVID-19. However, like Dr. Battle said, the recent data and the trajectory are promising. In Minnesota, the positivity rate for Week Four, which is January 23rd to January 29th, dropped to 15.2% from 19.9% last week. Both Scott County and Dakota County have also seen a drop in positivity rate. Currently, the rates are 16.4% and 16.1%. Last week, they were 22%. A decrease means we're going in the right direction. However, we do need to be mindful that a rate, a positivity rate that is considered transmission is, is halted in our community is 5%. So we have a little ways to go yet. The seven-day rates for Dakota County last week was six, 1,680. This week, it is 651. According to the CDC, which posted, their data is posted two weeks later, two, two days later. So whatever's on the data today is actually in real time, two days late. So the actual number today that Dakota County is anticipating as, or considers their case rate number is 552. That represents a 63% decrease in one week. For Scott County, the case rate last week was 1,521, and this week it is 620. Another important indicator of COVID in the community is the hospitalizations and the death rates. Here, too, we are seeing a little bit of a positive trend. Hospitalizations in the Twin Cities have decreased, and the availability of ICU beds is increasing, from single beds to this week, 18 adult beds and 16 pediatric beds available. Scott County has had 15 admissions in the past seven days. Hospitalizations for Dakota County this week have decreased to 38 from 58 last week. As we have learned from other surges, death rates tend to go up at the end. In the past week, Dakota County has had 13 newly reported deaths, which has been a pretty consistent number for them in the last couple of weeks. Scott County has had 11 deaths in the past week. For District 191, cumulatively for the school year, for staff, we have been informed of 315 positive cases, and 205 of those required an investigation and M D H reporting. Last week, the cumulative total for staff was 283. This week, we have had only eight, six cases reported for staff. For students cumulatively, we have been informed of 1,365 positive cases, and 762 of those cases required an M D H report. Last week, the cumulative total was 1,278. This week so far, we have had 35 cases among students reported to us. In the past couple of weeks, we have seen a rapid decrease in cases, which is very similar to the pattern in Minnesota. CDC's forecasting programs indicate that we could see case numbers similar to summer rates by mid-March. This is good news, and it gives us energy to move forward while being mindful that we currently are still in a high transmission rate. Testing and vaccination continue to be important mitigation strategies. Staff screening continues on a bi-weekly bill, bi-weekly schedule. I would like to take a moment to thank the site coordinators for making this program available to staff in each building. As far as testing kits, we have currently ordered additional home testing kits for students and staff. However, we've been informed that they're on back order. Each school has a supply of testing kits that are available for distribution as needed for students and staff. I also would like to give a big thank you to the Operations Department, especially Mark Glendy, the head custodian in this building. He's just been busy getting those kits ready and getting them out to buildings in a really timely fashion. Today, operations picked up our order of KN95s, which were being provided by M D E. The distribution of these masks are still being finalized. Okay, on to vaccinations. Next week, the FDA and the Advisory Committee on Immunization Practices will be meeting to discuss an emergency youth authorization for the Pfizer vaccine for children under five years of age. This vaccine will be a three-dose series, and it has a different formulation than the other, for the children five and up. The anticipated arrival of this vaccine is February 22nd. We are actively exploring partnerships to provide the vaccination clinics in our community for all ages with a focus for the children under five. More information will come as we finalize those details. Thank you, and that concludes my report.
Good evening, Chair Chester, Board of Directors, and Superintendent Battle. As I was sitting in the chairs thinking about this slide, I remember thinking to myself, this is COVID leadership in one slide here, where the first one talks about navigating conflicting expectations, and the second one is about how quickly the slide becomes obsolete because information changes. So the first one, what I wanted to share with you was that we do just have kind of a unique situation that could impact some of our coaches and advisors as it comes down to those isolation periods. As the board knows, and I'm sure much of the public had seen, we did adopt the CDC guidance that adjusted around the first of the year as it relates to isolation periods so that an adult who tests positive would be able to come back, provided no fever and improving symptoms after five days of isolation versus the 10. The, the little loophole here is that the Minnesota State High School League has yet to adopt that. And so what that does is it could impact our coaches in a contest situation. So because one of our coaches might be coming back on day six because of our ability to come back after that five-day isolation period, they could go and go to rehearsals and practices. But if there was an interscholastic contest sponsored by the high school league, that coach wouldn't be labeled to be a part of that contest. So it's a small potential impact, but still, it is kind of that little loophole that you might suddenly see somebody isn't able to coach, but they are able to be at practice. That's a potential for, for why that could happen for that five-day window. The second one was going to be making you aware of potential impact to our spectators if we were going to go to postseason events, many of which were hosted, are hosted, in Minneapolis and St. Paul Lake State tournaments, because they had the vaccine requirement for ticketed events in restaurants as well, or the, the potential of showing a negative test. It was just today that both cities announced that they were pulling back on those, so it no longer is really relevant to those potentials. So again, now it becomes obsolete. And that concludes my portion as well.
Yes, that concludes our report.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions?
Thank you. Bernie, would you have vaccination rates for the three different levels?
I would. And really the, so the last data collection, this is the first week of February, and it was just the last week in January, so there really is not much of a significant change at all. I would say each, between first and second doses, they all went up about 1%. Do you want specific numbers?
If there hasn't been, if there hasn't been much change, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Chair Alt, may I add to that? We had a discussion with Lisa Brodsky, the Scott County Public Health Director. The COVID-19 vaccinations are very similar to the demand of other vaccines. So initially, you get a big boost of the true believers and people waiting to have access. Then the next phase of people have questions, and so you have to answer their questions, and so you'll get a little bump after they believe their questions have been answered. But then the people who are simply not going to be vaccinated, they're not going to be vaccinated. And so she shared with us, you may not see big increases.
Thank you.
So just know it may be 1%, 1%.
Any other questions?
Thank you for your presentations again this evening. If you're, like I do, pay attention to the media, there's growing conversations about the effectiveness of masks, and there's some politicization going on about the removal of masks in parts of our country. I'm proud of what we've done in this community. We've set those discussions aside, the populist discussions aside, and we've focused on facts. We have three and a half months to go the rest of the school year. I would encourage us not to entertain any more discussions and stick to our guns. Our policies have Our policies have been effective in our community here. I know that our students are doing well with the process, and we should probably just stick on our course wrong, is my opinion. So, thank you.
Any other questions, discussion? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we will have a student representative report, Velli Olson.
Thank you. Over the past month, Burnsville High School students have continued to stay very busy. The first semester of the school year concluded on January 21st, and the new semester kicked off with Snow Week, which was the week of January 24th. The first day of the new semester began with the annual Snow Week Assembly, which featured group performances from Burnsville High School Choir, Band Swing, Dance Team, and Cheer Team. Students participating in winter sports were also featured, and the royalty court was crowned. In addition to the assembly, there were spirit days for every day of the week, such as Pyjama Day and Jersey Day. And students formed teams with their peers and friends, in which they participated in some fun competitive activities, including dodgeball, volleyball, and boot hockey. Thanks to the planning of students and student council, Burnsville High School students were able to enjoy an eventful and exciting snow week. As we have entered the month of February, the Burnsville High School Black Student Union has been diligently working to put on activities to celebrate Black History Month. Every day during third-hour classes, students from the Black Student Union share about an influential black figure over the school-wide intercom for all BHS students to hear. And this has been a really good opportunity for students to learn and, learn more about and celebrate black history. Additionally, the Black Student Union is planning a Black History Month Show and Spirit Week at the end of February. And this plan is for, to enable students to show off their culture and celebrate with some fun themed days and various activities. And many students are very excited about these upcoming events and are grateful for the work that the BSU has been doing to better our school community. Other students have also been working hard in various activities at Burnsville High School. The winter sports season is wrapping up, with many Burnsville sports teams participating in section competitions this week, such as skiing, dance, and hockey. In fact, the Burnsville hockey team won their section game last night, 6 to 0. And now, we'll move on to semifinal game on Saturday. The Burnsville Quiz Bowl went undefeated to win the South Suburban Conference Championship last weekend, which was their sixth championship in the past seven years, which was very impressive. Additionally, the Burnsville Drumline won first place at their competition over the weekend. It had a very interesting show titled "Three Seconds", which reflects on how humans impact the environment. It includes four movements that highlight different seconds that humans have been alive for. The first movement involves humans living in harmony. The second is symbolic of the Industrial Revolution. The third shows humans discovering and using the world's resources. And finally, it comes to a close with a movement to represent how the world is being harmed by some of our actions. And then, the question arises of how we can maybe fix some of these issues. Through their work, members of Drumline have been able to explore an important issue facing society today, while combining that with music, which is really, really cool. And they're very excited to be putting it on in competition after so many months of working towards this, as have all of our students that have been working hard in various activities and have been able to find successes and make our school community proud over the last month or so. And with that, I conclude my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments?
Is the program for Black History Month, is that open to the public or just for your school?
I'm not sure at this moment. I think it's geared more towards students. But I would have to check in on that. I know they're still kind of figuring out some more plans, so.
Thank you. That was a very good, very informative report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I was.
Yes, congratulations.
Thank you.
Next, we will move on to a report from our superintendent.
Thank you, Chair Chester, and members of the board. Tonight, I'd like to report on two activities our schools are celebrating this month. First, February is I Love to Read Month. Literacy is foundational to education, and we certainly promote and celebrating, celebrate reading all year long, not just in the month of February. But this month gives our schools an opportunity to play in fun activities and really engage students in reading, especially reading for enjoyment. Students are taking part in all types of activities, including some around an Olympics theme. So, our teachers really know how to integrate several different themes to make a much more robust experience. Want to highlight one, Ron Ellentry, for instance, and our director of teaching and learning, Amina Aftedal was able to go, I was unable to go. They held an opening ceremony for I Love to Read Month that included a parade around the circular part of the school, and they had a closing ceremony planned for later. And they have a closing ceremony planned for later this month. There will be dress-up days, letter-writing activities, book swaps, author discussions, and much more. One of the most common activities will be drop everything and read, or deere. For 15 minutes, everyone in the school will take a break from what they're doing and read. Wouldn't we all love that? The goal is simply to inspire a love of reading in our students, and from what I've seen across the district, it is working. Secondly, February is Black History Month, a time to honor and celebrate the achievements and contributions of black Americans throughout history and continuing today. While black history is American history, so it's certainly not only taught this month, this is an opportunity to highlight and center black artists, inventors, scientists, civil rights leaders, and other groundbreakers who have and are making our communities and our country what it is. It is, as you know, incredibly important for students to see someone who looks like them accomplish great things. That's why it's part of our vision to provide transformative learning experiences that mirror our students' own stories. We know it can provide that spark of inspiration that helps them find their path. So, I'm very proud to see what's happening in our schools this month, whether it's through displays in hallways, featured materials in our media centers, in classroom lessons, and also by providing platforms for our students to share their voices, as your student representative shared in her report as well. I do encourage board members and members of our community to see some of those activities and hear from some of our students by following the district on social media this month, because we still have no visitors during the instructional day. It's one of the mitigation strategies, only after hours. And so, if there is an activity, a play, sporting events, we do welcome the public. But everyone can follow these activities on social media. Thank you, and that ends my report for tonight.
Next, we will move on to any board member reports. We know that in the second reading of the month, we do our committee reports, but if there's any additional reports from unassigned. To make, seeing none. That concludes our informational section of our meeting, and now we will move on to the business portion of our meeting. Although board action is required, it is generally unnecessary to hold discussion on any of these items. In the event a board member wishes to discuss an item, that item will be moved for separate consideration. Do board members wish to remove any items from the consent agenda? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda? Moved by Director Connor, second by Director Miller. Any, oh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes unanimously. First, on new business, we have accept the American Indian Parent Advisory Group vote of concurrence. So, we have Amina Aftedal, Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment.
Thank you, Chair Chester, members of the board, Superintendent Battle. I am happy to present the resolution for concurrency from our American Indian Parent Advisory. The advisory team met in accordance with state law and school board policy to require, to, as the required established American Indian Parent Advisory Committee, and that meeting and vote was held on February 3rd. It is my recommendation that pursuant to Minnesota statute, it is recommended that the ISD School Board accept the American Indian Parent Advisory Group vote of concurrence, attesting that the school districts is compliant with Minnesota statutes and meets the needs of American Indian children. The resolution is in your packet.
Is there a motion to approve this recommendation?
So moved.
Moved by Director Hume.
Second.
Second by Director Werbe. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Next, under new business, we have approve the purchase of networking equipment, APs, access points. We have Rachel Gordon, Director of Technology.
Good evening, Chair Board, Chester, Board members, and Superintendent Battle. This evening, I'm bringing forward a request for approval of wireless access point upgrade project. This project will replace approximately 502 and add an estimated 25 access points, or APs, at Burnsville High School, Cedar School, which includes BOS and leased space for 917, Diamond Head Education Center, Eagle Ridge Middle School, and Nicolet Middle School. This project is approximately 50% of the APs in our district, and we anticipate the elementary schools will be upgraded in fiscal year '24. Wireless access points are a critical component of our network and provide the ability for devices such as laptops, Chromebooks, phones, and other Wi-Fi devices to connect to our wired network. This project includes 537 extreme wireless APs, five-year leasing, and professional services for configuration. So, if you look in this room, that right there is the AP for the access point. So, that's what we're replacing. Funding for this project is earmarked for FY23 Tech Capital as part of our long-term network infrastructure plan. The anticipated lifespan of a wireless access point is five to seven years, and our current wireless access points were installed in 2014. The wireless access point project qualifies for Category 2 of the Federal Communication Commission, or FCC's E-Rate Program, which provides discounts to public schools and libraries for equipment and services for telecommunications, internet access, and internal connections. Per the E-Rate requirements, a competitive bidding process was followed, with three vendors providing qualifying bids. The E-Rate bid evaluation requires that the price of the eligible products and services must be weighed heavier than any other single factor. The bid we are accepting was the lowest bid price by $32,000. Our district's E-Rate reimbursement is, that percentage is based on a calculation of the total number of students eligible for the National School Lunch Program, divided by the total number of students in the district. The original approval request that I sent to you earlier this week indicated that ISD 191 qualified at an 80% reimbursement rate. On Tuesday, just this last Tuesday, we were notified that for the next E-Rate cycle, we unfortunately now qualify at a lower 60% reimbursement rate. As is the case across the state, fewer families have applied for the educational benefits by completing the forms. We suspect this is related to the fact that lunches are being provided at no cost this year. Regardless, it has impacted our revenues related not only to the E-Rate and this specific purchase, but the larger implications of compensatory funding as well. For E-Rate, we have until March to provide updated numbers that would move us back to our 80% reimbursement immediately. That change would reduce final costs for these APs. Tonight, I'm asking for you to approve the wireless access point purchase, assuming the 60% rate. With that rate, the total cost before E-Rate reimbursement is not to exceed $300,000, and the total cost to the district after our 60% reimbursement will not exceed $120,000. If we are successful in reaching 50% free and reduced rate percentage before March, our 80% reimbursement will bring that total down to not exceed $60,000. It is recommended that the contract be approved with CDWG for wireless access points.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve this recommendation? Moved by Director Miller.
Second.
Second by Director Hume. Is there any discussion? Director Miller.
Thank you. As the majority of this is for replacement, and given that it's involved with this federal program, are we allowed to do something with the outgoing units? Is there any value to them at all?
Yeah, we will value them, and if we can, we have, there's, there's protocols that we have to, that we have to follow. But we can offer them for sale, and if we can get some money back from them, then we will do that. That will be our first approach. Sometimes, if they're deemed to not have any value, then they can just be recycled. But in the case of our APs that we'll be pulling down, I do believe that we'll probably get a little bit of reimbursement from them for the resale.
Are these functionally, you know, we have had issues for hotspot or usage for the lesser parts of our community. Are they usable in a home environment at all? Or even in a apartment building or clustering of homes at all?
They may be. I would have to look. Most of ours are managed, and I don't know if they can function without the management side of things. The other piece is, the reason we're replacing them is we can't, we can't continue to upgrade them. So, we're starting to run into where we can't for security updates, update them. And so, that would be in play even if we were, now, if somebody wanted to purchase them, that would be their concern. But for us, that's, that's really the impetus to replacing them.
Okay, and then, you know, I'll just, I already caught on to what you alluded to at the end of your presentation, but the, for the community listening, if it wasn't clear, this is an example of why filling out the form for the, even if you don't qualify, filling out the form, even if you know you're not going to qualify, filling out the form is critical for these types of things. That, that difference that we're looking at at about $60,000 is just a little bit shy of what an FDD is usually rated at. So, it just goes back to proving, as we move next into our conversations, we'll shortly hear about budget cuts, what difference it makes to filling these things out. Thank you.
You took the words out of my mouth, Director Miller. And to dovetail, we have conferences coming. So, that's an opportunity in our schools. So, thank you for pointing that out, Rachel, that, you know, we've got our families coming into our schools. That's an opportunity for staff to reach out and encourage, you know, in whatever appropriate way they can, you know. If you haven't, if you haven't filled out the form, you know, we do need you to. So, thank you very much.
Any other questions, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes our meeting tonight, and we will adjourn to a workshop. We will take a 10-minute break and begin the workshop at 8:10. We will take a 10-minute break and begin the workshop at 8:10.
So I've had to spend some time just reflecting on how much the economy is shifting. Interest rates directly, maybe not so much, but indirectly, absolutely. And the fact that our costs are going to be increasing for a number of our services, for a number of our products. We're already experiencing some of that realization as we, you know, negotiate agreements and/or look at quotes for future things that we're needing. So our copiers are up for, you know, a renewal at this point in time. There's just, there's just a number of things that, whether it's because it takes a while to get the parts or the equipment, or whether it's because they've experienced on their own increases in the industry that they work within, and then they need to pass that cost on, we can anticipate that there will be much higher percentages increased on our services purchased as well as equipment and materials.
So just to follow up to that, it's interesting, some items are actually decreasing. So if you look at food and nutrition, there's certain foods that are decreasing, and others are having the really big increase. So I don't know if we're managing that. We just look at what's less expensive, or maybe just those foundational budgeting when you're trying to cut back with increases.
So I know as part of our, you know, the last couple budget cycles, you know, we've talked about, we have right-sized based on enrollment. And I have to say that this go-around, I, I feel obligated to consider the fact that, you know, when I started on the board, we were probably at 9,500 students. And now we're assuming 7,219. And I've been giving a lot of thought to our vision, our mission, and how we're trying to be equitable, and recognizing that we're a learning institution. I do believe that outside of learning, we do need to look at where there might be other efficiencies. I think, you know, having looked at a report, thank you Dr. Battle for pulling that data together, you know, looking at the, the internal departments that have no contact with students, there are just some really interesting differences. You know, there's one department that runs really lean. There's another one that has what appears to be a higher headcount that really hasn't changed, and so it's not for me to get into those details. But I do look at the bottom line for each department, and I see, for example, you know, one is, is running very lean, and the other one is double, double the, the cost, if you will. And if you look at the, the leadership, compare the leadership between those two departments, you know, there's, you know, there are two directors versus one. There are multiple clerical positions in one where there are only, I think, a handful, a couple. I'd have to look at that. So I guess, long story short, yeah, there's, one has like four and a half, and the other one appears to have just one. So I guess what I'm saying is, without getting into all the details at the board level, a reorganization may well be needed because if there haven't been changes, the internal staffing can't be sustained, as is. Because I'm sure that the workload, well, everyone is working hard and everyone's plates are full. You know, it's true across the board, and this board needs to take that into account. And I believe that, again, as a learning institution, we need to protect the equity and the learning of our students, and recognizing that we will have to right-size. You know, there are probably other areas where a reorg might happen.
Other questions, comments, thoughts? My question is, is does this expense of the 130... Um, my question is, is, does this expense of the one thirty, one hundred and thirty-five million already include the right sizing?
No, this is doing nothing at this time. So we can move to the interactive to show you putting in the right-sized numbers. For example, what does that do to things?
Okay. And I kind of want to coincide with Director Alt though too in saying that anytime you're approaching right sizing in organization, you're looking whole organization. And so that's would be, I would concur with that guidance.
Would it be helpful, I'm not sure if the three new board members, have we used the interactive, would you before?
I think last budgeting we may have.
We did, it was pretty minimal because last year.
We didn't have as many.
So these numbers will change as you put in an assumption that's, and you could kind of see.
Yeah, because like we, we had zero in because we didn't have the budgeting thing for two and stuff like that. So.
Okay.
So, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, because we had, it was a budget year last.
Well, it looks like it was a zero.
That's right, that's right. Okay.
And so then we knew that we wanted to comfortably sit when we were trying to protect whether or not we stay at the eight or, yep.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Yeah. So what, how about if we look at the interactive model? Um, and then we can maybe ask questions or put in different.
Can I ask just a big picture question first?
Mm-hmm.
Dr. Battle, Lisa, what direction are you looking for from the board tonight?
So.
What do you need from us to move this, keep moving this forward?
I'll go first. So, let's look at the strategies. And Lisa, we can piggyback together. So I like to answer using the strategies. So you've already given some feedback about right sizing. So that's an example of what we'd like to hear from you. Um, use of restricted funds before general undesigned funds. So Amina and Lisa both talked about that a little bit. Um, so I'll let Lisa talk a little bit about that and I'll go to the efficiencies in utilizing resources.
Right. So, you know, our restricted funds, when I think about that, of course, we've got quite a few restricted funds in the federal funds. And so there's the wondering of how much, it's an arbitrary choice to, to split the S R three in half and split, you know, between two years, for example. So is that the appropriate approach we want to take or not? At this point, your model is going to show you as if it's not accounting, um, not addressing any of our, um, typical expenditures, but rather only additional expenditures. And so, you know, that gets down into the, the last item of strategically using those federal resources. Other than the federal resources, it's also a question of the restricted funds like capital, compensatory, um, safe schools, those kinds of things that we typically have a restriction for. Are we, um, utilizing it to cover the things that we want to make sure we've got covered? Is there any possibility of doing something different there? So we've had lots of conversation around, I can move more expenditures to capital, for example, which would mean that I'd be spending down the capital reserve. But then I'm asking if they can then remove the general unassigned dollars from the budget so that their total budget stays the same, but the blend of how much of it is capital versus how much of it is unassigned, um, you know, is, is different. Does that make sense? If I got a hundred thousand dollar budget, and usually only twenty thousand is going to be capital, but I can spend, I can spend forty thousand on capital, then the other, instead of eighty, can I make that sixty? So I still stay within the hundred thousand that I normally would use, but the proportion of how much of it is capital is going to be higher, and we'll spend down more of our capital reserve than we will our unassigned. So we've had that dialogue with various different departments, um, in, in just really trying to look at some of these costs that may be eligible under the state statute for capital purposes.
But are those capital purposes reflected here as on a separate budget?
See, this is where it gets down into the bottom as far as what's restricted and what's unassigned. So that's where that comes through, but, you know, the, the item on your strategy is to use restricted funds before you use general undesigned funds. And so that's that, an example of using, um, if you've got a capital-eligible expenditure, I can use general unassigned dollars to cover that cost, but I'd be better if we use the capital, if we've got the reserve and we can spend that down first.
Okay.
So it's, it's that thinking that we're trying to get people to really consider when reviewing their line item budgets at this time.
Then for the, I'm sorry, you have a question? The identify efficiency in utilizing resources. So as you know, our core business is teaching and learning, and our primary client, uh, is a student. And so with that comes many mandates and standards and expectations. So when Director Alt talked about the differences in the department, some of those people are added because of compliance. And so you're always looking at these new mandates to make sure you're not, uh, reducing, and then you have to go to somebody external because it has to be done. And then one of our largest departments here is our core is teaching and learning. And so if you're a corporation and, or three M, you know, scientists make up a lot of their employees, but, so it's identifying efficiencies too, and then looking at what's the mandated work, what we really need to have to prioritize our investment in instructional priorities. And then what's nice to have is really what may have to be reduced. And so that's the approach too with identifying efficiencies. Um, so what we're going through with cross-functional teams, what's the nice to have, but you really don't have to have? And as Lisa shared, can we move some off of the, uh, general undesigned? Can more, can you move around?
And just to, just to clarify, I, I, it, I hear a little bit of a question, Dr. Battle, and so I, I just want to clarify what I meant. Um, when I think about learning, I think CISA and our schools. Right? And recognizing that building and operations is important, recognizing that HR is important, reaching, recognizing that finances department is important. They're not dealing directly with learning. So when I talk learning, I'm talking CISA and schools.
Mm-hmm.
And that's the egg that we protect.
And then one of the other efficiencies, uh, looking at the big buckets such as transportation. Yeah. So it's actually looking at the big chunks. It's actually looking at each line item, budget, people, supplies, resources. And then I, I, I must say, the other, which I think you'll get to next, what I'm looking for from the board is the legislative platform, because you saw in the presentation, we're cross-subsidizing ten, thirteen million. And just imagine if you look at this number here, the deficit's ten million, if they fulfilled the promise for special ed. And so that's the other that I think is really important from the board, is lending your voice about how we are funded. The root of the problem, too.
So I was just wondering, um, is there anywhere where we can see like a breakdown of how healthcare benefits is impacting this? Because I read a few weeks back in, uh, a Friday update, they're anticipating range between seven to twelve percent for a possible increase for next year. So where is that being factored into any of this budget?
Yes. Our health insurance has an eight percent increase assigned to it at this time.
So how much, do we have that, like, can we get it like an amount tied to that as far as how much that's going to impact?
Um, so yes, I do have that. Let's see. One point two, almost one point three mil is the increase.
And when is our next, um, renewal cycle for benefits?
Do you want to speak to that? It's next year?
Twenty, twenty-three.
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 Yes, not this year, but next year.
Yep.
Keep in mind, um, we're self-insured.
Yep.
So as you, as you take a look at all of that, um, it isn't so much what people are bringing to us as far as rates that we can, um, that we need to pay, but rather what do our claims look like? And what does the, um, impact to that look like upon our current year and into the future? What reserve you have. So it's a, as you know, it is complicated. But for the, for us being self-insured, all of that data is what we're looking at.
And doesn't the right sizing impact too? Because you have less people?
Yeah.
Yeah. So.
That's a factor.
Yeah. So then we, yeah, the increase because we have less people. Yeah.
And I know that some of our right sizing is based off of what the school board sets as terms of what we ask for in, um, class sizes, and we have like a minimum. Um, but then hearing, um, Stacy's, uh, presentation, um, in terms of like the grade six through twelve, what it's kind of like an average, like special ed has maybe eight kids and, but there are some classes that, you know, we hear might have more than forty kids in it. Like, is there a way for us as a board to determine, like, do, uh, do, do boards set like a max limit too of students per classroom?
That'll increase your cost, or you have to give up some programming such as college and schools that have an outside requirement of capping the class size. Um, your special ed services, your E L services, I don't think I would address those or touch those. I mean, those are based upon I E Ps and minutes of service that are required. And that's where a lot of your F T Es come up. Um, for our E L, it'd be the, the level of service that they're receiving, one or two versus three, four. Five would be exiting, working on their way of exiting. All of those kind of plop into a formula that identifies, um, both class size and the number of, uh, minutes of instruction or the number of courses that they might need. E L does, as far as how we generate the F T Es. Really, you'd be looking at your other classes that are small class sizes that are optional, that you're nice to have.
Yeah. So like our pathways courses, yeah, they couldn't be as small. So, yeah, there's a implication.
By saying we want to cap the max?
Yeah. Yeah. Average, yeah, caps, limit.
That's what drives up your average.
Do their choice, yeah. Yeah.
If you're going to offer twenty classes at twenty students, then you're going to have twenty classes that are going to be forty-ish or more, because they're under your average.
Presumably some of those larger classes are things that would be difficult to have any smaller, like band, choir, some of those that might have a larger number of students.
The teacher wants a larger band.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, yeah, yeah, but I'm, I'm, I'm just thinking of some, you know.
You'd have to be careful if there was going to be a max that you wouldn't.
But also here, where, where sometimes if there's too many students, the, I hear also.
Oh, yeah.
The efficacy of the, being able to educate all the students in the room.
Yes.
Well, and particularly if it's, you know, core, you know, core subject matter. I mean, I guess, you know, I understand the pathways conversation and I understand the elective conversation. Um, what I am confused by, and I, and I understand your, your explanation, Stacy, about, you know, completely. You know, if you have, you know, one less student in this class, then that impacts, you know, classes elsewhere. But if it's core subject matter, is it really that difficult to, to, to manage those larger class sizes? I mean, to, to find efficiencies with the schedule itself?
Yeah. So say it's, so let me answer first. If it's an English ten and that same teacher wants to offer an elective, so the English ten, I say that's a bit, but thirty-five, but they want to offer that elective, they may have fifteen. They get to lower in the thirty-five or forty, they need, they're not going to have the elective. They may not have the elective. So it does impact the electives. Because there's so many periods in a day that a teacher teaches. Students have a full schedule. They have to get prep. So, yeah, there, there are implications either way. But it does limit choice in classes for students. Yeah. So Stacy wanted to add on?
Well, you, you start reducing your options is what it comes down to. So instead of language, you know, your, your language arts to where you're exploring, uh, the mid eighteen hundred poets versus the nineteen hundred whatever versus contemporary this or that. All of a sudden, it's like, no, I'm teaching English ten and we're going to hit all of those areas for a small two-week section on everything versus going in depth in any one area. You know, you start limiting your pathway type of options, but core really is fine. We're just going to streamline this. It's not going to have much to it, and you move forward. But some of those cores are designed to tie into your pathway programs as well, if I understand. So, you, you know, now you're, now you're pulling a string on one side and finding that it's coming out and putting a pinch point someplace else.
And then some high schools in designing the schedule, they will say, we want to keep the ninth grade courses small, so let's add students to the juniors and seniors and make their courses higher. So you take away the flexibility too.
The, the, the other piece that can always explore is currently we have a semester model, or trimester models to try to get the different options in. We have seven periods at the high school. We could look at six periods. All of these have different, um, pros and cons, you know, but again, you're limiting, the, the fewer courses you offer, you're limiting your options and your pathway programming that's available. But it is more efficient, much more efficient, you know. So it, you're, you're stuck with efficiency versus options or opportunities.
And so that's why you look at other, like the co-teaching helps, so, you know. But there are implications for each one, as you said.
Just ask, it's kind of diverting back to Hannah's question. It just got me thinking, you know, in terms of the contractors that we employ, um, you know, is it possible to look at the, you know, the contractors that we employ and, you know, go out for, you know, an R F P and see if maybe we can do better for ourselves? And, and are we limited by the terms of the current contracts to be able to do that more sooner rather than later?
Oh, like the out clause?
Right.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Yeah. Oh, yes.
Yeah, okay. So that's, you know, that's another.
You know, we, uh, our photography service, we made a change in, in that.
In what?
With the, our photographer.
Oh, yes.
For the district, with a much smaller firm than a big corporation.
But there are other, there are many other contractors that we, I mean.
Yes.
I would say that, for me, that would be certainly an area to think about, um, you know.
But the reality, as Lisa said, we're seeing they're getting higher costs and they're passing it on. So, yes, but that is something you can look at.
Our, our biggest contract, well, correct me if I'm wrong, but transportation and your subs.
That's it.
And I don't have another resource for subs. It used to be Teachers on Call and Kelly Services. Now they, Kelly Services bought Teachers on Call. So it's Teachers on Call, or we bring that back in-house. And then I have all of the T R A expenses plus the medical expenses and the options for folks as well. Versus paying an administrative fee and having somebody outside that, you know, does the recruiting for subs and manages the subs and takes care of all of that.
And then I did mention transportation earlier, but I know some of you in this board experience what happens when you don't have quality. That's always a consideration too. They may say less.
We haven't had problems with transportation, really, since Schmitty. I mean, they've been an awesome partner.
Yeah. So transportation is the one contract, uh, teachers are probably the two biggest.
Well, you know, we, we do look, you know, well, even within our.
We haven't had problems with transportation, really, since Schmitty. I mean, they've been an awesome partner.
Transportation is the one contract, teachers are probably the two biggest.
Well, you know, we, we do look, you know, even within our department, but just recently, we did the photocopiers. You know, our enrollment software, where we have a one-year deal. Our benefit committee is starting to look at other options because we're finding that it's, they're starting to charge more than what we want to pay, to your point. And so what other vendors are available for the registration for open enrollment and bringing folks on? That's kind of ongoing, which isn't always hits budget review. It just, how can we do it better? It's always there, in that sense.
We began our process for the copier review by reaching out to our sites to find out what's working, what's not working well. It's interesting, I know things are working well when I haven't heard any complaints about the service in that particular area for, for a while, right? And, and yet you, you hear about it when there's concerns or issues too, so. But on a routine basis, a copier is every four years. So we're going to, we're going to have to, you know, and finish that process and figure out what, what's the best move there. I'm trying to think of this, there's another big one coming up, other than the transportation. I think those are the two biggies this year.
You're, back to the right sizing, right sizing rolls uphill. I mean, you have your class size based upon enrollment, your teacher still sees twenty-five kids, let's say elementary, okay? So even if I have to reduce eight teachers at the elementary because of an enrollment decline, the teachers that I have remaining still are seeing twenty-five kids. So it isn't like the workload for those teachers, for those students has increased. Right sizing, when enrollment declines, the other area that's impacted primarily at the middle school or the high school would be meals cert, okay? So that declined. Our elementary, we have three staff for food service. A manager, what we call like a long-hour person, and then about a two-and-a-half to three-hour person, you know. So just somebody that kind of helps with the prep and the breakfast. And, and then the two people to serve the meal and, and take the, the payments or, or point of sales at that, at that point. Then the next area, as your buildings continue to lose enrollment, and I kind of indicated this earlier, then we're back to the conversation, well, I have two elementaries next year that are under three hundred students again, as we continue to, to decline. So now you're forced with the option, or you, you either can look at closing buildings again, because we're small neighborhood schools, or you do your reboundery type of issue again. But that's where your next layer of right sizing comes in. So if I were to close two elementaries that are below three hundred students, now I'm reducing two principals, two clerical staff, getting efficiencies with my teachers, and my support services can be reduced. The more buildings that I continue to close and consolidate as far as buildings and programs, the next layer that that rolls up is, I don't have so many different buildings that I have to monitor the title funds for, so many buildings that I have to provide reports for, for purchases to do accounts payable and receivable. And you're able to start continuing to consolidate your, your payroll as well in our onboarding and, and HR. Everything rolls up as far as right sizing.
And actually, and, and we did that, so, I mean, we closed a couple of schools, and yet those departments were not impacted with FTE as far as I can remember. So that was a missing piece.
Well, but you, you have a certain threshold to where you do start making some of those changes. I, I'm sorry, it, it's like, if I'm running a payroll for a thousand versus fifteen-hundred, I'm still running a payroll. I still have all of the, the, the process with that. If I'm onboarding fifty teachers every fall, plus the, the turnover that I have in all of the other departments all year long, you're still doing it. I still have STAR reports, still have SERVES reports, still have UFRS reports, still have, and that's the other thing, the amount of information that the government is requesting of us on an ongoing basis has created in and of itself such a burden. It doesn't matter if you have, and, and then when we have all of our categorical funding areas that we also have to monitor and report on. I just want to be careful with that. Those are responsibilities that are still there.
I understand that, but you just contradicted yourself in a way where you said that if we were to close two more schools, it would roll up and start affecting that, and we closed three schools and nothing happened.
Your, your critical mass, I don't think you're at that critical mass.
Well, I did make some recommendations and the board didn't accept them.
When we look at, when we look at other districts of comparable size, we're, you're still pretty much right in line.
I also want to be cognizant that, you know, we're, we're, there are conversations that are giving some members of our school community the opportunity to speak with the board in ways that, that might be perceived to be defending the, the solid, the, the unity of a particular department. And that's a very limited opportunity, so I just, I want to be careful.
So I'll reiterate what I said, we're looking at every department. We're looking for efficiencies, and I am looking at what are the mandates, are there other models? But whether you're a NOKA Henepin, you have those same mandates, but they have more, and they probably have ten, fifteen more people in the department. And so I have to keep an eye at that and then see what we're no longer going to do, but still keep the mandates, we have to comply. So we have some people who are compliance model, are there other ways? But then I have in the past made some reductions, but it was not accepted. So I, I, I have done that and I will continue to do that.
And, 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 and bring them back if, if you need to. I mean, that's, it's, it's another, it's another conversation, so.
Because I, I, I just think Steph, everybody is valuable, is this is a horrible position to be in. But we have to be good students of the taxpayers' money and we're dealing with people's livelihood.
We are, and I think we also need to recognize the, you know, some of the system, systems efficiencies that have been built in. We benefited from new programs and, and, you know.
And that this board is very cognizant to know that the last in is the first fired and the impact on diversity.
Yeah.
And so that was also very key too. So.
Learning.
I do know that as we had transition in our payroll position and two other positions in the same period of time, we took advantage of attrition and went from eight down to seven for the finance department, right before COVID hit. So there is, there's that opportunity when it arises. I know that's something we look for, to take advantage of and reassess.
And I'm sure Teresa would have let us know that too. Just trying to be mindful.
It would always be helpful though if we did address the twenty-two, twenty-two hundred students that we lost.
Yeah.
And that would make the conversation, I think, a little bit easier if we could start thinking about why we lose students.
Yeah, so I think that's another conversation, because enrollment drives whatever the state gives us to per pupil.
I don't, I don't know that saying we should start trying to figure that out is accurate. We've been talking about it at least since I joined, or three and a half years ago. It's been an issue, even, I know it was an issue before that. We haven't been able to reverse the trend yet, absolutely. But we've certainly spent a lot of time over the last three-plus years talking about wanting to understand why it's happening, what we can do differently to change that trend. And we haven't been able to yet, which is very unfortunate and disappointing, because that puts us right back where we are right now every year.
I think the one thing that we did differently that I think we all can be proud of is our investment in our communications department.
Yes.
I think, I think what our communications department has been able to do, really, I mean, it's, it's a beautiful facelift, a great communication tool. I mean, that's, that's the first step.
And I think people had that perception, historical perception that didn't match the reality. And so that was the investment to really get out there and tell our story. So I think we have addressed that part of the enrollment, that we found from people that we didn't have quality programs, there wasn't rigor. And I, I know Director Miller highlights every time the number of courses that we offer at the high school. So, we have, you're right, we have been addressing that enrollment. And in the early childhood, you know, what the families want, and you had that presentation. But as we saw, they don't continue into our kindergarten. So, from Carolyn Cherry, what is it? We need to find out, because they've had good experiences, so why don't they continue after that pre-K? So that, I think that's the spirit, there still needs work to get done, because it doesn't happen at one school. It's one or two at elementary across that add up to, what are we at? We did the math earlier, two, two thirty?
Two hundred and thirty or something, yeah. In a way, it'd be easier to address if it was all concentrated in one.
Right. Yeah. So, and I think the other, the initial question, what do we expect from you, is the federal resources. So how to really use those well? And so we made the assumption, you know, split in half and are you going to use it?
Oh, the SRR three?
Yeah, mhm, so that's the other.
Because even if we moved SRR three from twenty fiscal year twenty-four into fiscal year twenty-three and use it all, we're still looking at a deficit of two million dollars.
Well, and we don't.
And then just passing that deficit on to the next year anyway.
And we don't know, you know, one year to the next.
Right.
I mean, I kind of, I'm getting the sense that the, the, the recommend, the initial suggestion of half one year, half the next is kind of your best recommendation of, okay, this is really the best way for us to make sure we're covered.
Yeah. So, any feedback about?
Well, and it's really relief, so, so, I mean, once it's gone, I'm assuming those extra positions added for the relief will no longer unless we wish to absorb it, say.
Well, I think that.
Unless they make it permanent, so the funding permanent.
Yeah.
We have been adamant from day one that we should not be applying these to places, places we can feel the pain and we're doing it. And more specifically, I would say, to core instruction, we shouldn't be building up programs and teachers around the SRR funds. And I think that's probably the chief guidance you need from us to. We should be spending it, but we should be spending it in places that, that we can afford to lose later on, because we don't know if that's what's going to happen.
Yeah, but as early in board means, and you know from the stakeholder feedback, the mental health. And I remember Director Connor about the therapist. So that's a person. So it's hard, and then you're right, then the money goes away, and then there that therapist that's been really anchor for our children, and then it's gone because we don't have the funding. So it's tough to address the impact of COVID without it being people. And that's the difficulty. But then, yeah, because it's not going to last, and you've got these positions.
So in some of our discussion, I know that when we're seeing this deficit moving forward, we kind of provide guidance to like whether we agree to dip the unassigned fund balance below eight percent and all of those scenarios, and wondering if we wanted to have any of that discussion or provide any of that guidance here when we look at examples.
We should?
Yeah. Well, part of it is, is that right sizing hasn't been considered yet. And so I'm curious if, if there's right sizing that's been considered, where is it and what's that amount that you've projected already as, as, and then what, if there's still more deficit to address or not?
Right. I see what you're saying.
So if I may?
So that's the twenty-fourth where you'll get?
Below what we've shown on the screen, I have some other shaded fields on my interactive model that as I replace the zero with the amount that we understand to be our potential average of the right sizing for positions, right? And the amount of, because there's a, a per pupil allocation for supplies and materials, and the enrollment is lower next year than this year, there's a bit of a savings there too, right? So those two things combined, placed into this cell, then lowers your expenditures that are not the federal funds, but the, the, just expenditures line. And with that, instead of it being ten million dollars, that is the deficit, it's down to seven-point-five mil. And your fund balance unassigned, assuming these reserve fund balance numbers. Now, I said that this one was low, so if you're okay with that, I'd like to, I would like to increase this to a one-point-three mil from a one-point-five currently. And I would do the same over here with just a one, one million and eight hundred.
And then the preliminary adjustments?
Yeah.
Oops, thank you.
Put in five hundred thousand for preliminary adjustments too.
So down here under preliminary adjustments, if we put in a negative five hundred. Now, when we're talking about federal funds, right now, this is set to show that we would spend the full eight million dollars on all additional expenditures. And the challenge with that can be people. For instance, of that eight million, one million, six hundred and fourteen thousand is going to be for the twenty percent SRR three, which is for outside of the school day, outside of the school year, programming. As we plan for summer programming, that can be in that eligible amount there, the challenge we're running into is, is finding personnel who can do these added programs and provide that added experience for our students. So there is some, some thought amongst my peers that in many cases, a district may be best off to determine an amount, like we did for the current year, that you actually do dedicate towards sustaining your programs and not necessarily reducing them fully to balance your budget without the federal funds, and then add everything back, but instead to, to utilize those federal funds for that purpose. Does that make sense? So we did that this year to the tune of three-point-nine million dollars. And at this point in time, that's not reflected here. So if we, if you were to decide to use a portion of the six-point, almost five, almost six-point-five million dollars, that's the SRR eighty percent, which is broader, and is really for the ins, in, within the school day expenditures, that is, that's where you'd be pulling from for that purpose. That can be reflected in the bottom line that is shaded.
Be put in number and you'll see. So this year was three-point-nine million.
And we were fully staffed?
Meaning by fully staffed?
We had, I mean, did we? We served all the students who came?
Didn't have shortages.
So remember, we started off with about seventy-five unfilled positions, that's why I'm hesitating.
Got it. Okay.
You mean, actual people who showed up or that we had in the budget?
Yeah, true.
So the staff will tell you, no, there's still unfilled positions out there. That's why I'm hesitating.
Yeah, yeah, no, that makes sense.
To get more about what you mean by fully staffed.
Did you offer transportation for summer school team?
For any added programs, we absolutely did, and yes, transportation was provided for summer. The added transportation for added programs was paid for out of SRR. The typical summer school transportation was part of our regular budget.
And so the other is the carryover. I think Lisa mentioned it earlier, that the board, there's a carryover, because we do have some unfilled positions, as she said, we're, we have it in the budget. And so that's why you keep having a adopted or revised budget. So I don't know if you wanted to say anything about the carryover.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's some federal programs that, like I mentioned, um, may or may not necessarily be fully utilized by the end of this June. And so like if they're running into this, particularly the ones that are for the summer programming, the A R P governor funds and, um, the, um, summer expanded programs, um, those grants will likely fall into the July and August as well and before we fully utilize them, and we may still have just a little bit left after that. But those, those, for example, are going to carry forward into F Y twenty-three and they are not included in my model at this point in time, but instead would be picked up when we do the revision. Because then we will know with the audited figures being complete, how much we have room for.
And those don't have a end date, so like, like S R two can go into fiscal year twenty-three? Or like if you don't use it, you lose it?
Right, S R two can move into S R, or I'm sorry, S R two can move into fiscal year twenty-three and still be within its timeframe.
And we have the pandemic enrollment loss that goes through?
The pandemic enrollment loss goes through twenty-three.
Twenty-three.
But the COVID testing grant only ends this June, so we have to use it by then. So each grant on that list, um, has specific dates, so we have to be very cognizant of those.
So you may have more money in the funds through the carryovers, but you won't know.
But recall, federal funds, we put the, the revenue equal to the expense.
Yep.
So if, if you don't have the expenditure, you also aren't going to get that revenue in that year. And so both will move over then.
Got it. Anybody want to play with anything, like numbers, like, you know?
I don't think we can, I don't, I don't think it makes sense to, to talk enrollment differences. I think we just stay with that assumption because that's, you know, the best, the best guess at this point. We were able to do that a few, a couple of years, a couple of times back, but I don't think it makes sense to, to play with enrollment.
Yeah, I mean, and I'm not recommending anything with class size except for the idea of like if it's too much. That was my only question.
More to the projected enrollment, was it a hundred students? I can't remember.
What's that?
So we came in with a projected number, but the board added a hundred students?
Two years ago.
Yeah, that's what they're referring to.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, that increases your projected revenue then.
With some of the enrollment or sign up, um, happening now, or what, what is, are we seeing a trend on anything that might illuminate?
Well, it's just the one we started off. We don't know what's going to happen with virtual academy. It seemed we thought we were going to be through the pandemic and here it is again. So that's the, we're trying to compensate for that. We don't know what families will want to do. Will the enrollment in virtual increase? Because we got more, remember we had out of district people who came? So I don't know if that's, but that's one example that comes to mind to me, playing around with enrollment.
Yeah.
We projected, uh, less than what we thought were going to show up for V A, so.
And I guess along those lines, I mean, it's not, I, I guess, you know, how did we do with the one offs? Well, I guess that wouldn't really have done anything for us within our existing students.
So until you actually have students in the schools, you don't know. It's all projections.
Yeah.
You don't know what families are going to decide or what may prompt them and.
Yeah, I was just curious with the, with the open houses and, and all of that, if they, if we were seeing or feeling that we are having more inquiries or, or anything like that, would that would be somewhat different from previous years or not?
The largest grade that we, it's kindergarten and we start tracking kindergarten the first of, uh, February. So every week we chart that year over year. We've rolled all of our, um, kids' B P K that would be eligible for kindergarten over that are going to that grade level. At this point in time, I think we have about two hundred and fifty kids. We're needing around six fifty. Okay? And so I'll get an idea as, as the weeks start going by on whether we're kind of within that same type of channel, if we're way above or low. Interestingly enough, we've had some years where we've had a lot of early enrollment with the open houses. And then July and August, I didn't remember, and stayed right there at that six fifty. This year, we're doing something a little bit different. We're, we're holding back at the elementary level. We're holding back, um, eight floaters. Normally we do three. But because we're so uncertain about our V A and our kindergarten, we're really going to hold those F T Es back, individuals, until we have a better picture in August as to where they will need to go. Hopefully, we're going to address the, one building has the lower size and another building is kind of maxed out and we can try to do that later. It is one of the tricky things, some, um, when I first started the district, those allocations didn't come until October first. And we didn't even have people. We were hiring October first, you know, depending on what the actual student count is. And, and principals, rightly so, it was like, well, you're not leaving us much as far as quality teachers on October first. And so that's why we moved more to a, keeping floaters in place. We're moving away, we're going to try, we're moving away from the point five allocations. Having, uh, so that's part of the reason why we're doing the floaters, to offset that. Also, you know, part of the, the compensatory piece, we're allocating the, that money towards our E L programs. Our school within a school that generates that money. And then secondary, elementary, we're not going to have an F T E for compensatory. So buildings will have to use their title allocation for the discretionary programming. Part of it is, in the past, buildings would use their compensatory to round out that point five.
That point five.
So since we're taking care of that on the front end, hopefully they won't need that discretionary use for the classrooms there.
So you're saying the buildings that are earning the compensatory are not getting to use the compensatory?
I'm not saying that because we're paying for our E L services and many of the buildings that generate the compensatory also have the E L needs as well.
Sure, sure.
Yeah, so it's, it's, it's pretty comparable across. And then we also have two of our compens, uh, two F T Es for compensatory comes from, uh, goes towards our, uh, continuous improvement coaches. Some has to go towards our targeted services for, um, early child, early learning.
B P K.
B P K. And then, like I was saying, the school within a school, so your middle schools are running your school within a school programs, your alternative learning programs. Well, that money has to go back to them, plus the money that they get for E L services.
And one of the reasons that E L, that's where our largest gap is. And the data is E L. And so, as you know, that's what compensatory is to really shore up, so.
Any other comments, questions? Any recommendations for guidance?
Not any good ones. I mean, that I can, yeah, so smart, I don't matter.
Is that three million that you just put in?
I was just, I was just checking my formulas. So that three million would reduce the, the expenditure amount with the assumption then that that three million would be coming out of this eight. Do you follow what I'm saying, everyone?
Oh.
So that's how you use that cell, is you identify the amount of federal funds that you're willing to utilize towards existing expenditures for this year to be able to, um, get closer to balancing that budget or not use as much fund balance of the unassigned. And that then allows you to fully utilize the federal funds before they are no longer available to us and yet extend the opportunity for you to utilize those funds in your fund balance at a later date.
I see what you're saying.
Because they broke it up into eighty percent and twenty percent.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. And then there's still the possibility of carryover that could also impact that you're saying.
So, um, two, two kinds of carryover. That you can probably expect to see, if it's federal related, you're going to see the revenue and the expense both come forward and that will then mean that, um, your bottom line doesn't necessarily change, but you have more funds available. So unless you, um, were utilizing those in a supplanting of method, then you would otherwise then have additional expenses, right? The other method of having a carryover is, as we oftentimes see in our past audits, where these open positions that we've had out there and we weren't able to fill for nine months out of the year, or let's say six months out of the year, um, that is the savings that you're going to see come through in the audit. And that, that generates a, um, increase to your fund balances. And if it's not in a restricted area, it increases the unassigned fund balance. So that will show up then in your revised budget as a, a new starting higher fund balance than what we're projecting.
Okay. I think we're done. Thank you.
Do you have a floor to the twenty-fourth?
Mm-hmm.
I think we give one ten to the items.
Yep.
See what's going to come back.
Yep. Moving on, our next.
We need a signature from somebody. We need a signature from somebody tonight, don't we?
For me?
Don't we need a signature from somebody tonight? Didn't Jamie leave something? No?
We, we signed.
We signed everything.
You signed already.
Oh! You got to the legislative session, you added another topic.
Yeah, the legislative.
Yes, I didn't, oh, I just, I just, I thank them for being here.
That's what I'm saying, she can't leave.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry, excuse me.
Am I here? No?
Yes.
So, so our next item is, uh, to discuss the twenty twenty-two legislative platform as well as, um, um, uh, usage of, uh, if they were to have exemption. And, yeah, you would like to share the legislative table.
All right. All right, so the proposed legislative platform document for this year was created by the legislative committee over the last couple of months, looking at M S B A and A M S, A M S D legislative priorities for the coming year as well as our own district-specific internal needs and priorities. So that was kind of where the, the items outlined in the, um, platform document came from. The, the specific things that are in the document this year are permanent funding of free school meals, removing the fifteen-day residency requirement for students, including enrolled in online schools, which would include our own virtual academy, increase the safe schools funding to increase mental health support, reduce the special ed and English learner cross substitutes, which we were just talking about in the budget workshop, provide targeted funding to increase the diversity of our teacher workforce, and last but not least, um, providing a legislative exemption to allow proceeds from potential property sales to be allocated to the general fund balance. And regarding that last bit, I also want to mention, one of the things we wanted to talk about tonight is that, um, our state representatives have asked us for more information regarding potential youth, non-capital uses of the property sale proceeds. Since that's why we're asking for the exemption, when we met with them, was that just last week? Recently?
Was it last week?
Two weeks ago? Whenever recently we met with them, seems like, and they are asking us for more specifics about what the proceeds will be used for. And so we wanted to get input from the board about that so that Dr. Battle can respond to the request from the legislators. Did I miss anything?
And we do see on the general platform here, the, the document that Erin created for us, it's, it's not specified. So in here, it's just that we're looking for the exemption and that it's to transfer to the general fund, so it's that.
That's what's in the line, that's what's.
Intentionally made.
Correct.
But, uh, and so, um, some of the question is making sure that we're all same paged in terms of the exemption and then also, um, discuss the, what we would consent, have consensus on and need to vote on is would be, what would be the intended use?
The intended use and then just the platform in general.
The platform in general, yes.
Besides the, the exemption, are there any concerns or questions about the other five items?
You mean beside, oh, other than the five items?
So, so the whole legislative platform, five, one through six.
Correct.
Where would you like to start, Scott?
Well, why don't we start at one? And just go through each one and we'll save the best for last. So are there any questions or concerns around item number one, permanently fund free school meals for all students?
That you were, that would be directed at federal funding, right?
Yes, I think so. Right.
So, just in order to be, I don't know if we've ever had an agenda, I don't know if it's federally initiated or directed, but that's okay.
This is one that M S B A is definitely pushing for this year.
It's interesting.
And I'm not, I think A M S D was also, is that?
But it didn't end up on the platform.
It did not, okay. Yeah. So looking at.
No, it's just a, usually a play in the state sandbox, but that's, yeah, so, but that's okay.
Do you have something to add? Abigail?
Um, I, just, yeah, I do. It's definitely a worthy and noble goal. It's only right that meals be, um, provided for students in our schools. At the same time, I have to weigh against that, the fact that each student deserves a quality education. And right now, for, as long as I've been on the board, we've seen Lisa's slide showing how we're not indexed to inflation, we're underfunded. And my concern with, so two parts. My concern with advocating to fully fund meals is we're putting our legislators in the position of potentially choosing how to use education funding. And it's, you know, it's a, a lose-lose situation. But at the same time, I think it only, for me, it makes sense to focus on the education. Let's get ourselves back up to parity with where we need to be with our education. Funding for, in the classrooms and then get to the, the school meals. The second part is, um, there also was discussion at, at M S B A about streamlining the identification process, advocating to streamline that process so that it's not an application process. It's, goodness knows, the state has enough information to, to, to identify families, right? With WIC, with unemployment insurance, with health insurance. Why can't we advocate to streamline that so that then, you know, it doesn't matter what the family does, it's just the, the fact of their household income that would automatically qualify them. And then families, you know, it's not, it's a non-conversation, which is what we're going for with, with what's proposed in this platform. You don't want it to be a conversation. I think there's a better way to get to it. And I do honestly, I, I do honestly worry about, you know, what, if a family doesn't need a free meal, wouldn't that money be better spent in the classroom?
That's what I'm thinking now. If it's federal dollars, that's not going to happen. You would very almost nothing with the classroom, just with federal dollars. Right? I mean, I'm not, I'm not talking about special ed.
Yeah, just a slice of the pie, that's what you're referring to.
Direct payments to the general fund, which is for ordering regular, regular instructional teachers.
Just, um, mostly your, your title, teachers. Yep, yep.
And they're supposed to be at forty percent and they've never hit it.
Right.
So, I mean, it's, it's. So, I mean, it's, it's.
Taking a stand on that, and, you know, this money, I, I understand the degree of perspective totally, but I don't know that that's getting to be, you know, a hundred percent.
Yeah, and I guess, I guess, you know, it's watering down the conversation. If we know that both the state and the feds are still not, you know, fully funding education, you know, the meals are, it, it, it's, it's a great idea, but it just, we need the money in our classrooms first.
Can I just say something? Uh, I understand what you're saying, but, um, not having food is a social determinant of health and not being able to eat and have a full belly impacts learning. So it's tied together, um, to learning in my, in my eyes. Although I question where, where does this have a voice in the legislature? If that's a part of our legislative platform? If, there's nowhere for it to go on the state platform, why is it on our, our legislative platform?
We have other legislators not at the state level that represent us. We've had Representative Craig come to a legislative committee meeting, for example.
Okay, so then I would say, okay, so that, I was gonna, I, my question was, is there a path to the federal funding from this, our platform? And so you're saying that because of Senator Craig, we can?
Well, I think it's, I guess from my perspective, if we're advocating for anything with our legislators, there's nothing preventing us other than the number of hours in a day for advocating with Senator Craig or, I mean, Representative Craig or Senator Klobuchar, Senator Smith.
Okay.
We can do that in the same way that we can also advocate with our state-level representatives.
Okay.
We just may not be able to as easily because they're dealing with a much larger geography.
Okay.
And they're in Washington.
Well, we're asking them to fund the cross of special ed to the level that the federal government needs to. It's written in here anyway.
We've already had another one, our, exactly, we have two things in here that we can go to the.
With that understanding, then I, I feel it should stay on there because, um, I think it's been a longstanding issue that it should be funded. Um, there should be no child that goes hungry. And regardless of if it's because they can or can't afford it, um, it should be available to them with no questions asked.
That's why they get it in the first place, because of the children not being able to really function and learn, well, that's a small part of it, because of their, you know, they weren't being fed. I mean, they just weren't nutritionally, you know, they didn't have the, um, their brains weren't full. You can't think and function so well if you're worried about being hungry or, oh, I can't wait till lunchtime so I can eat.
I'm wondering, um, if we could maybe address this by, um, shuffling the order so that we prioritize, one is the one like.
That was going to be another question.
And then like, two is, you know, and then go down. Um, so if we're really looking at funding that, you know, one could be reduced across subsidy for special ed and English learners.
And when we talk about these, I don't think we actually said, this is number one, this is number two, this is number three. I think it was more, these are the priorities we've identified.
Yeah, but I think, but I think if you're presenting to a legislator or representative or whatever, you could say, like, when you think, people might make an assumption, like, this is our number one.
Right, no, that's.
And it's most, it's most important, and then go down the line. And so maybe we could compromise and, and reshuffle the, the priorities. Um, because I do, I, I, I think the question that I had, um, regarding, because I'm fully supportive of permanently funding free school meals, um, at the same time hearing that if not everybody fills out the free, uh, meal access, you know, like whether they're eligible and that, um, impacts our funding, what's being addressed with that? So like, if we do this and that goes away, what's the funding that's going to happen there? Um, and, and so that might be the, the larger question too.
Right. That system needs to be reformed.
Yeah, so.
Does MSBA suggest, I mean, do you know if MSBA or AMSD has addressed that, like, in terms of if they're advocating for?
They are, I think they are advocating for changes, but, yeah.
Free meal lunch, uh, universal free meals and then figure out the rest later.
I think they both of those.
It's an interesting strategy.
Yeah.
Then the gov, the governor gave funds for that, just for this, for, um, 2023, though. He allocated funds for the free meals. I don't know how long that's going to last.
No, that actually came, you had the, they gave waivers to the states. Now, that all came from the federal governments to the states, correct, Lisa?
Yes.
That's the way, yeah.
It's all federal funds, I know.
It comes from, it wasn't the state. We asked for it.
No, yeah, it's, it's through the.
It's through this, right, yes. That's what you're saying, yes. But the governor can't just give it to us. Federal government has to say, yes, you don't have to charge.
So, um, next, number two, although might, well, might not stay permanently, number two.
Second thing in the, for the purpose of this conversation.
The second thing for the purpose of this conversation is to remove the 15-day residency requirement for students enrolled in online schools. So is there any questions or, um, thoughts or related to that?
I love the fact that there's a policy request that will have financial, positive financial implications for us. I think it was really wise, um, to have that because it's nice to be able to say, look, we're not just asking for money.
Right.
But this will, and this will also help us.
Yes.
Yeah.
Good.
So, that's, anybody else? So next is to increase, uh, safe schools funding to expand mental health supports. And that's something we've been hearing loud and clear across our district. Um, so.
From everybody, parents, teachers, everybody.
Yep.
So right now, you can't use it to hire staff, like the mental health therapist. Those in the details.
And we just touched on this, but reducing the cross subsidy for special education and English learning, that's something that has been on the legislative platform since we created one. Um, and so I'm saying, trying to, um, and then, this attraction model thing, this, we just did this before. Next is, uh, provide targeted funding to increase diversity among teachers. I know that was, been on our legislative platform last year and probably the year before. And then six is, uh, provide a legislative exemption to allow local control of property sale proceeds. Um, is the last one that we have had since, um, we developed a resolution for, uh, open facilities, so.
Right.
I'll throw that one for discussion.
And I guess just to, just for clarification, because again, it's been a while since we've discussed it. If we didn't have the legislative exemption, the money would, um, automatically go to debt.
To go to work?
Debt on the, on the, on the, initially for the building. And then any proceeds remaining would go either to, could go either to debt for elsewhere in the district or straight to capital.
It would, it would go to capital.
It would go to capital. Okay.
Um, so the, there are two things at work here. This, this is legislation for the state portion, right?
Yep.
But because the federal law basically says that all of our bonds would become taxable if we didn't pay off the debt related to these buildings that we sell, um, first, then we have to do that. So regardless of exemption or not, we're going to pay the debt related to that particular building. And then it's all about the proceeds above and beyond. Without the exemption, it's capital. With the exemption, it goes into your undesignedated, unassigned.
Okay, thank you.
And so, as I, as I mentioned earlier, our legislators are wanting some, a little more specificity from us, from the district, in terms of how, if there is any
over.
Over, remaining money after we've paid off the bill, if the, paid off the, the building, if there's any remaining funds, how might we want to consider spending that money if they grant us the exemption?
I think.
And all these other things.
Another way of putting it is they want to know what we're not going to spend it on.
Perhaps.
Probably do that. I think you give a number.
Well, it's not so much a dollar amount, it's, what kind of.
Intents and purposes.
Right.
Just intent, okay.
Right.
Thank God they're not doing that.
Well, since we don't want to know what the building is.
Well, the original discussion was that we should, but we've convinced people in a way that this is a bigger deal than traditionally the diamond, so we need an open number on it because we don't know what's going to happen.
Right.
This is not just a small piece of land. I'm not a, a, adverse to giving some percentages, saying, you know, we're, we're directionally, the, the board is, feels that, you know, percentage should be set aside for, um, you know, this or a percentage for that or something like that. Much that you do it, you know, in front of bounds.
I think that might be getting too specific, not, again, not knowing where we're going to land.
But what?
But that's what they want.
I don't, no, I, I think this is what they want to.
They wanted percentages?
Well, I don't, I think they want some sort of partition at least. If you don't want to put it on a number, then. But I don't know if you just say majority, that would be healthy enough for their.
The example that came up was, we would want to use some of the funds to continue to support our investments in our pathways program, for example. Good.
And I would add to that, um, that some of it would be for capital. Because I think, um, if we're selling a building and not re, taking some of that money and reinvesting it in our buildings, knowing that we're going to have two middle schools eventually, they're going to, we're going to have growing enrollment. They're going to need to, we're going to need to re, renovate those buildings. We can't simply say it's all going to be for programming. In my opinion.
So we also don't want it to all be for capital.
That's not what I'm saying.
Right, we do that, we would not need the exemption.
Well, yeah, and, and that's.
This is why I just said, simply setting up some swim lanes.
Right.
However you want to define those, I won't care about that. But, but you, we're all in the same conversation here. I don't agree with, has to quantify them, I'm just saying.
Right.
Some guidance on our, our thinking, because we have agreed that we have to give that.
So if we just mentioned to them, let's say, three out of these six intents of this is what we're going to use the money for, that's not specific enough?
Oh, the, 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 the platform here, the other five are not for the intents and purposes of the exemption. The exemption is a whole separate thing. So like, if we sell that calf and we owe eight million on it, but we sell it for 10 million, we are asking for an exemption to use the 2 million that we would have been confined to only use for capital purposes to have more freedom and flexibility to determine how we would want to use that 2 million. Does not apply to these other five bullets. These would be, and so our legislators are asking us, if we had that extra 2 million in our general unassigned fund, what purposes would we want to be directing those dollars to?
Besides, okay.
Yeah, and so, so we're looking at, uh, what was proposed is because we have such, uh, commitment and dedication in our, and probably in our pathways program, that we, we would want to use that 2 million to, for however reason, you know, for whatever reasons with, for that purpose. Um, is to, you know, enhance whatever, and enhance could be, we need to add a lab on, you know, I mean, then that's capital and we also have the addition of the program, you know, so that 2 million could, we have, we have that flexibility to say that's what we want to use it for versus just capital specifically. And then there, we have no, we're limited to that capital request. So whether it's fixing a building or, or whatnot. So we want, we wanted, when we originally determined in our resolution for, uh, the open facilities was that we wanted to seek the exemption because we wanted to have the most flexibility possible. But now our legislators are like.
Give us more detail.
That's a little, that's, that's really broad. Can you narrow it down just a little?
Yeah.
Um, but still, they were very clear. They did not want us to put any dollar on it because we don't know what a sale would be. So they didn't want us to specify there. They hadn't called out anything related to percentages of breakdown either. They just kind of like, give us, give some bullet points ideas.
Right. Yeah.
That kind of something.
I think so.
And then once we, okay, because I get that part up until, like you said, that, um, this is what they want if we have this money left over. But do we, I mean, so even if we give them, okay, say, for instance, we want to use it for pathways, then we have to use it for pathways, right? We don't give any discretion that.
So what happens if we get a hearing and they ask that question? Uh, we have to answer.
I, I challenge that. There's a difference between how we write the bill and how we answer the questions in hearings and we're, in, in talking to the, uh, you know, the people that are putting it forward for us.
And the bill does not specify it, how we are going to use it.
Right.
The bill does specify it's going to the general fund, the general unassigned.
It's just a request that came. Yeah.
I think it's knowledge for the committee that's deciding on the bill.
Yep.
Again, I think, I think there's a lot of what we're not going to do with it involved in this because they're, I don't think, I think they just want to be comfortable with the idea that they're not going to take the money and
Well, and the other.
Build some ridiculous building or monument or something, whatever. Do something really useless with the money, right?
Right. The other possibility that, that has come up is potentially using some of this revenue to help support our literacy outreach and our literacy programs and really focusing on that. I know that's been a challenge in our district in terms of learning loss and getting our, all of our students caught up to where they, we want and need them to be, especially in the early grades. Um, so that was another one that was brought up, um, as a possibility that we may want to have some of this funding, support those programs. Dr. Battle, do you have anything else you'd like to?
So would it be helpful to kind of give broad categories of what uses we could use it for outside of capital? So you don't want to be limited that you can't use capital.
Right.
So are there broad categories that may help a little bit more?
My biggest thing would be concentrating on enrollment and what is happening in that, that preschoolers not staying with us and finding some way to find answers to that.
Is there a way to invest this money to address the enrollment issue? That's an interesting idea.
Yeah, it has to be that one thing we have not settled. And I don't know if it could be settled, but at least if we can start some type of work towards it.
So we owe them a statement?
This is, so, but we'll be invited in, correct me if I'm wrong, um, is our legislators are moving forward to push to get, uh, hearings in the education committee.
Yep.
And, and such, and so in order to, um, testify in those hearings, so the, Dr. Battle and Lisa will be there to testify. And, uh, Senator Duckworth, as well as Senator, all, all our legislators are asking for, um, how we're going to tell our story as to the use of, you know, potential uses for the, the, the exemption so that it kind of pulls their heartstrings to want to have everybody support.
And to want to say yes.
So my suggestion would be to be craft a, a simple, um, short paragraph response to that for your board has thought much about these, uses of money and, and direction that I have received from them is that it will be used for mixed purposes, including such things as capital spending, um, you know, furthering educational benefits in the community, uh, impacting other enrollment issues and things like that. And then you would have some examples deeper if they start driving down on that with you and asking for more details on what that means, then you can get into telling the story about how the enrollment is impacting us or how we are cognizant of the fact that we may need to use some of this money to, once we do reverse that to. to, to rebuild a school or something like that. And I empathize the, you know, the, the conservative nature that we're going to take with this money and protecting and understanding its value, it's a long-term value, not just its immediate value.
You would think education being so underfunded that we don't have to go through this explanation of needing funding. You know?
What do you think we're going to do with it?
In a just world, it would be, okay, here, search your check.
But if we list it, then clearly we will be held accountable for funding it.
I don't agree. If, if the bill still goes through saying, it's all, this is just questioning, I'm asking, what does that mean to you?
Yeah, it's not written in the bill.
I mean, they don't have any obligation to do that.
Mixed use, I like mixed use.
And, and I think, well, and I think, you know, legally, no, we're not going to be found to.
They're not going to come back and check and make sure that's what we spent it on.
So that's why, we don't want to be boxing, yeah, we don't want to do that, right?
But we also don't want to be.
Yeah, they can.
Right, right.
I think if we're, so what we're suggesting is simply saying mixed use. And, and the verbal bullet points would elaborate on potential uses.
Yeah.
I like that.
I think they want to be comfortable that this conversation occurred, which is healthy. I mean, appropriate. That we're not just imagining a magic windfall falls into the general fund.
Well, and I think also, you know, if we're, if we're thinking in terms of, you know, Leslie, you mentioned pulling at heartstrings. I don't think we can underestimate the value of capital in those examples.
Right.
Because there are other things in education that need funding. And we need a balance.
Yeah. And I think mixed use is the right term.
Yeah.
Because again, it does.
Serves all the needs.
It's still general unassigned, we want the maximum flexibility, whether we choose capital or choose this or choose this.
Yep.
We want the most flexibility.
And I think, Scott, you made a good point. We want to continue to have this positive relationship with people who are presenting this for us and not burning bridges and giving them the error.
Right.
It's like hearing we have some consensus.
Yes.
Okay, so now, do we have any recommendations to reprioritize this?
Yeah.
This legislative platform? I'm hearing that, my screen isn't moving. I'm hearing probably number one should be reduced across subsidy for special ed and English learning.
I would agree.
Number two.
The legislative exemption.
The legislative exemption.
Agreed.
Yep.
Number three.
This was one? This goes up here. Sorry.
Fifteen-day residency, that's the policy.
That's a very specific one for us, yeah.
Okay, so the, the number three, I'm hearing.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I was a little distracted, writing down notes about the brief comment. Can you go back to what moves up first?
Yep, so number one, we're selecting.
Four.
Four.
Cross-subsidy.
So.
Four is now one.
Four will be one. Two will be six.
Legislative exemption is two.
Yep, three is the remove the fifteen-day residency requirement.
I would say that the mental health should be number three.
Yeah, what was number three again? What'd you just say?
The, the fifteen-day residency requirement.
Oh, yeah, mental, mental health is more important than that.
I think they're all important, the, the, the good thing about the, good, the, the thing about the residency one is, I think as Abigail said, we're not asking them for, it's like the only one, we're not, where we're not asking for more money. So in that sense, it feels like it's, might be good to move that up.
And imagine what we could do if, if that was lifted, like we could actually get more, more enrollment.
Keep differential going.
Yeah, yeah. And potentially add more students.
I guess I would point out that we, we're very verbal, this is not truly, just change the numbers to bullet points.
Oh, yeah, I know.
It's not a priority, it's not a prioritization of priorities. But we, we are acknowledging the fact that whereas at number one tends to, human nature is that becomes assumption.
And whether it's a one or a bullet point, if it's at the very top of the page, other people are going to see first.
Kind of makes a little bit.
And the order after that is probably not as hypocritical.
I would agree.
Yep.
So what's four?
Yeah, but mental health is taking care of the students we have now, as opposed to, I mean, I know we have.
I'm fine with the rest of this basically after one. Again, maybe just changing the numbers to four.
I got that, I put bullets, I put bullets.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think, I think we'll let them to the point that sense, but I also think there's still that.
Yeah, there'll be a hierarchy.
There, there is still a perceived hierarchy, you know, too, you know, because I think we could also argue with providing targeted funding to increase diversity among teachers is way up there.
I mean, there's a reason why all of these are on the list.
They're all important, we're not saying they're not all important, but.
Exactly, you know, um.
I don't think they should be ranked.
No, no, they're, and if, they're not technically, but, but again, like the, a legislator is going to go so that, you know, they're going to.
They go in order from top to bottom.
They are, yeah.
And they stop reading by the time they get halfway through, if they're like, a lot of people I know.
But I do like the idea of removing the numbers and making them bold.
Yeah, I do too.
Yeah. Or do they, do they even need to be a bullet? Can it just be the bold?
He already did it, he knows.
He probably did it while we were talking. Here I have a new one for you to look at right now.
Yeah, you know, because I, because.
He hasn't denied it.
I'm texting to the other people in my department.
There you go.
Got a little Friday morning project for everybody.
So I think, I think that kind of, I mean, we don't need to really keep going down, but as long as we have like the first couple, I think that's.
Yeah.
And we're in general agreement for these six, it sounds like.
Yep, for sure, for sure, for the six.
We can add it to the next meeting's agenda for approval.
Is that going to give legislators enough time if we do that?
We need, we owe Doc, Senator Duckworth the talking points. It was in the next couple of days because they, because there's some things happening at the capital that we're wanting to sort of beat out of, I can't remember what it was. Was it the rezoning, redistricting?
The redistricting is coming soon.
I mean, I just, just asking, like.
I don't think they need the platform. I think what they need is the talking points about the, how the potential uses of the money.
And we've had the conversation, so that's, that's what really matters.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay.
I think what they need in order to move the legislation forward is Dr. Battle's response.
Got those.
Or Leslie's response, whichever one of you is responding.
Yeah.
Was the mixed use suggestion that we came up with.
Yep.
Awesome, okay, good.
And then this will still be able to go and then add a, add a follow-up, then we can go, eh, here, look what we just met.
So report and then approval, February twenty-four. Report and then approval.
Yep, yep.
Awesome.
Great.
We predicted nine forty-five.
I'm all for today. That concludes our meeting at nine forty-six.
Well, I started to say nine forty-five.
You know?
Oh, I really did, I really did.
The latest was Tony at nine thirty.